Call this meeting to order. If you'd all please rise. Councilwoman Caramba, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Here.
Councilman Purdon?
Here.
Councilwoman Carr?
Here.
Mayor Simmons?
Here.
Councilman Corey?
Here.
Councilman Gibson?
Here.
Councilman Forbes?
Here.
Okay, well, this is a workshop, so the rules are a little different, but I would, at this time, if there's public comment. Dwight, did you have something you might want to share this morning? Okay. No, that's fine. I just, anybody is here that wanted to, I want to do, okay? I think we're, everybody else, okay? So no public comment. Arlene and Ann, you want to?
Sure.
Just kicked off here. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present the staff's draft request for our annual operating and capital improvement budget for 2020, 2021. For today's workshop, the only two permanent decisions that we're asking you to take a final vote on today will be setting the maximum millage, because we do need to provide that to the tax collector, as well as setting the actual final, the preliminary budget date of Wednesday, September 9th at 5:05 PM. We will have to make a decision on the location as well, because that will also be included in the TRIM notice. And with that, we do have a PowerPoint presentation for you to provide an overview of the requested budget and an opportunity to go through the capital improvements projects as well. We have prepared the budget similar to last year, as discussed, the same format as Lee County, where we have provided you with a continuation budget, which is to keep services the same, and then some additional items that staff is requesting in the next fiscal year, to review those item by item. And with that, I'll ask Ann to start.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ann.
You each do have a copy of the PowerPoint, so we'll go through that. Starting off with the general fund, requested revenue budget, $19 million, 403, 847, with our pie chart showing the composition of the major revenues, with 46% of our revenues from add-to-law and taxes. In perspective to our current fiscal year, the original adopted budget for total revenue is $19 million, 853, 337. This number for FY 2021 is less than that by $449,000. Our general fund assumptions for the preliminary property tax base increase of 4.39% for tax year 2020. It's the tax year 2020, because that's the year of the levy, and that's our budget request uses the 2019 millage of .8173 in this draft budget. Other general fund revenues are showing some negative or minimal growth, being impacted by the current economic climate. Next slide is the general fund property tax calculation, and you see how that works through with the taxable value. We back off the portion that relates to the downtown area, which is, that revenue is allocated over to the downtown special revenue fund to fund the debt. So we come up with a total preliminary tax base for the general fund revenues of $11.5 million, and just using the current millage of .8173, we come up with $9 million, 368, 522. When we budget, we only budget 96% of that amount, considering the fact that a lot of people may pay during the discount period and other implications that could result in us not fully collecting that amount. And so that has worked out well for us. Historically, we've come in just generally right above this amount, using the 96%. By state law, we have to budget at least 95%, so we go a little bit higher to meet that threshold. So we have a budgeted general fund revenue for property tax of the $8.993 million. This amount is $351,181 higher than the FY 20 original budget. Next slide is a history of the add-to-law and taxable value increases when we received the June 1 estimate and then the July 1 preliminary. And you can see historically, the July 1 preliminary does come back a little bit higher, so we have a more conservative number that we received June 1, and then the preliminary's a little bit higher.
Hi, I just have a quick question, really, on the slide before. Does this include the change in the homestead exemption allowable?
Yes, yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
The next slide, Slide 7, is requested expenditure budget, showing the composition there, with the bulk of ours falling under general government. And the next slide goes into the general fund expenditure budget by functional categories with the dollar amounts. The FY 2020 original budget was a total of $14 million, 646, 489. So this budget draft is showing $14 million, 427, 111, so it's $219,378 difference. Slide 9 shows the general fund expenditures compared to the FY 20 original budget and the FY, so that you can see what we considered normal general fund expenditures, and then some unusual, or not normal items, abnormal, that we've had in some past years. The budget also, this draft budget does include $350,000 in the contingency account.
Mayor and Council, that's a continuation of, you recall, we put $900,000 originally for legal fee expenses. We've reduced that anticipation that we'll have concluded those, and we've just left a contingency of $350,000.
Is there any way to adjust the speakers? Because there's so much echo from the one's face and the other way, it's kind of hard to understand what.
Yeah, I can't, I also can't hear at all.
If you could just turn these up and maybe the other ones down a little bit.
Maybe without the microphones.
I can't hear, there's so much echo here, I can't hear what anybody's saying, pretty much.
Let me be the test and blow out the room. Can everybody, no, but can everybody hear me?
It's not volume, it's.
No, but different on the perimeters, I think it's difficult.
Can we get rid of the microphones?
It's the reverberations in the room is where it is.
Could they hear us on camera if we got rid of the microphones?
No.
Like this, I can hear you.
No, I think if we just turned down the other speakers, this is already sounding better, isn't it? It was the echo that was throwing me off on understanding what everybody was saying.
Can't have that, okay?
This is better?
I think that is better.
That's good.
Thank you.
Continuation. So Mayor and Council, at this point, we'd like to provide you with, as we said, similar to the way the county has presented their budget, we have looked at continuing services at general rates with clarifications for as cost of doing business, certain regular increases come to us through the budget, we've allocated for that in the operating budget. So these are items that were not included in last year's budget, that we wanted to bring to your attention, which do provide line item increases. We're here to take any questions on those, as well as the department directors are here to go over those. For professional services, that ADA consulting, that is to work with the ADA consultant that we brought on this year, to give regular consulting advice to us during any information or challenges that come to us, also giving updates to our website and to actual locations as well. It's an on-call service. We did upgrade the phone system at City Hall, and we now have a lease program, which was less expensive than the purchasing. We are also looking at the VRC storage costs, closed captioning for ADA accessibility, upgrade to our software equipment. The KVM remote monitoring, and Laura's here to help with those as well, if any questions. We have some capital outlays for parks and recreation. We have the inclusion of the water steward in this upcoming budget. We have the inclusion of cutting horse educational facility, which helps with our.
TMDL.
TMDLs as well, providing additional outside education. We'll get credit for that. And Matt's here to talk about the canal and drainage maintenance, the wet ponds. We are continuing our CRS program maintenance, Benita Beach Road, I-75 interchange maintenance, which is an increase, US 41 landscaping maintenance, East Terry landscaping maintenance, downtown Old 41, Logan Boulevard, and utility irrigation. So if there's any specific questions on any of these, I did want to point out that, yes, the general fund contingency, because of the removal, we originally had $900,000 in contingency, and again, we're expecting $350,000 in this coming year. $350,000.
Then we also have the unassigned fund balance beginning that we could also work with, is that correct?
Sorry, the unassigned fund balance, is that?
You know, we have an unassigned fund balance for the budget. What is our starting, what is the projection?
Correct, correct. And Ann's going to review that as well.
We have an upcoming slide on that. In fact, this next section is on fund balance.
Yep, and if anyone has questions, department directors are here to help with any of these as well. So these, again, were not included in last year's budget, these are new items.
Moving on to fund balance, then, the next slide shows the fund balance that you see each month with the monthly financials.
I apologize, Ann. Last year, there was a service fee or a tax that was established, and that has rolled over for one year. When's the appropriate time to discuss that?
We have a slide on that as well.
Thank you.
Summary of the fund balance, that shows where we stand as of September 30, 2019. That's the last date of our, most recent audit. And the next slide shows a history of our unassigned fund balance. And again, this is general fund.
So again, what is our projection for September 2020? Do we have one?
That's actually in the budget book.
Budget, on the budget at a glance.
Yeah, I was going to say, Amy, page 5 will give you a good little snapshot. No, but it should be. Yeah, yeah, I know. It should be in this list. I don't want to be slipping pages.
I hear you, I absolutely hear you.
It's on page 6 in the budget book. I'm sorry, that's summary. Page 5. So down at the bottom is the expected FY 20, that shows what we end, we expect to end at September 30, 2020.
Which is $4 million, correct?
Yes.
Which is $4 million, 536,340.
And then that comes up to the top section to start us off with this FY 2021 budgeted amount.
Which is $4 million, 245,337.
$4 million, 536, that's the number. So if you put it in here, it's sort of in line of what we've been doing all year, except for that one time that we were short.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
It's strategically similar to what it's been historically.
That's correct.
Correct. So you're saying that the general fund's balance of October 1st, 2020, of $4 million, 5, is the unassigned fund balance for that?
Correct.
Okay.
Being projected.
Projected.
And it may not be even, but basically, we're a quarter behind.
Yeah, we don't know for sure, but we're shooting for about the customary level that we've been carrying for years. That's the question. Okay.
Ann?
Pardon?
If we had another Irma, God forbid, where's the money to pay for that eight or nine million we got upfront to clean it up?
We have the unassigned fund balance, and we also have $1 million in disaster reserves, which is separate from unassigned fund balance, plus we have $4.3 million in operating reserve, which is for instances where you have revenue shortfalls and to cover that. So that's some cash flow. Council would need to approve that if we were going to use the reserves for that purpose.
On page 6, Fred, about three quarters of the way down.
Okay, Slide 15 shows the cash balances that you see once again on a monthly basis, showing as of September 30 for this year and the prior two years. And other information. Do you have a slide on the impact of litigation items? Did you want to?
So as a reminder, that we were trying to complete the litigation that we went through this year. We have made final payments to WCI out of this fiscal year of 6.3 million, out of fiscal year 2018, 2019, general fund of 6.3 million. And we have also made final payment for legal fees as well in this July of $955,361. So we're hoping to, we do still have the commitment to BG Mine settlement of $4 million, 989,000, which we'll be looking to either reflect in this fiscal year or next fiscal year, depending on the settlement as we move forward.
And that would be September, I mean, you know, what's, or is it, no, September 31st, October 1st?
Closing is expected to occur this month on the property, but there have been some issues with some of the permits being issued, so that could cause it to be delayed a little bit further, but my guess is.
That would bump up right against that final September passage?
Yeah.
That would be fluid?
I feel that we're going to close in August, but it's a possibility it could be in September.
Thank you.
Next is a slide on revenue options. These are options that have been discussed in the past. The electrical franchise fee, the fee is at 4% currently, the maximum is 5%. A 1% increase in this rate for a full year generates approximately $640,000 in revenue. So this is, that 4% electrical franchise fee is revenue to the general fund. The communication services tax, this rate is at 3.61%, the maximum rate allowed is 5.22%, and a 1% increase in this rate for a full year generates approximately $370,000 in revenue, and this revenue is also recorded in our general fund.
Yes, and then this year as well, in the draft budget, we did include the base budget for the resolution that was adopted last year in September 2019, which does include the stormwater assessment fee as well. And that, so that is included in this current budget draft.
And the next slide does show the different rates in place for other jurisdictions on page, slide 19.
What exactly is an electrical finance fee and a community service tax?
The electrical franchise fee is a fee that appears on the electrical bill, so FPNL, and the communication services tax is a tax that appears on communications, cable, the different.
Cell phone, internet, cable TV.
Franchise fees, I mean, you call it a lot of different things, right?
Taxes.
Territorial taxes.
But like Comcast and Summit, and they pay all the same finance fee. That would be the tax that would be increased on Summit, Comcast, is that what we're talking about? And then they pass it on to.
Yes, they put it on their bills, and then.
And they pass it on.
And it's remitted to us.
It's the small print at the end of the bill that you get every month.
Is it always one-to-one? Yes, I mean, it's a pass-through?
Yes, yes, yeah, we actually get that amount.
Thank you.
And if you're interested, I'm getting it on my Zoom bill.
Oh.
Are you really?
Yes, they just started doing that.
Interesting.
Okay, then the next slide is moving on to a couple of other areas to touch on. This is the status of our current outstanding debt. You've seen this chart before, so it does show the amortization that we're looking at on our outstanding debt, the downtown redevelopment debt, and then the roads debt, which is, actually just has after this fiscal year, two more years on that debt. Next slide is a history of road impact fee revenue. You see that we did have our peak so far in FY 2018, and that is something that is, you potentially could see some declines depend upon development.
I'm sorry, Ann, can I just backwards one second? Ann, forgive me if this is a silly question. 2023, when we aren't paying the 2.5 million for the roads debt, where does that money go back? Does that go back to general fund, or are we moving that to something else, or what are we doing with that?
Where do the funds go back to? So he's saying after 2023, they're no longer, the debt's complete, correct?
Well, it's, the debt is actually paid by the road impact fee, 85%, and 15% from the general fund. So after it's paid off, that demand won't be on those two funds to make debt service payments.
Perfect, thank you.
We have the history of the park impact fees on slide 22. And then 23 shows our budget calendar for the remainder of the year, which we will be asking for council to vote on the time, date, and location for the tentative budget hearing, that is, the first budget hearing, it's called the tentative budget hearing. And then we have on our schedule that you had previously approved, the September 16th, 2020, for the final budget hearing, and then the first, the two meetings in October for the ordinance related to the capital improvement plan.
Additionally, Council, we'll be dedicating a portion of the next two city council meetings, August 19th and September 2nd. We'll place an agenda item on the budget for continued budget discussion and update as we receive new information, we'll be providing that to you, and also to provide any inputs, recommendations, or changes. We'll have an agenda item on both of those regular city council meetings as well.
Okay, and that concludes the overview.
Thank you, Ann. Do you want to start down at this end, Amy? Or will this go by district, or we can all jump in, whatever? Doesn't, you know, whatever.
I have to go to all my little parts, I mean, what do you want to do here? Go through the whole?
Do you have questions or thoughts?
No, I don't, I have some, let me see. I'm just not ready right now, I have.
No, that's okay, Jesse?
I'm kind of where Amy's at, in the sense that I'm, I mean, we got, and this is not a knock on staff in any way, shape, or form, so don't mishear this. I mean, one of these packets that we're going through is 599 pages, so I mean, I spent a chunk of my weekend looking at this stuff for zoning today, and I mean, I'm glad, I know we're doing this in multiple bytes, so that's why I'm completely cool, but I'm kind of with Amy with, in the sense that it's kind of a lot to give you a comment exactly right now, but I'm sure I'll have an opportunity.
And our thoughts for today this week.
Some of these have notes on it, like, for example, on page 24, it's about law enforcement and the contract. Would you just describe the, we must have some kind of an escalator contract here, could you just explain what's happening? This is just reflecting a contract we have with them, isn't it?
The law enforcement contract, you say, is that? Oh, the increase that we received was the estimate provided by the Sheriff's Department to prepare for the budget, it was approximately a 3% increase.
So they said there's going to be an automatic 3% increase, and it's just included here, okay?
Yes.
That's what's my, I thought there was something like that, I didn't know how much it was.
And through the budget, when it was provided, a cost of doing business increase, we included those in the draft budget.
And I do have some comments on the budget, I really thought it was very helpful for each department to tell sort of what they're doing, you know? So that was helpful to me. And I was surprised, like, on page 36, this is just an example, that under government transparency, they talked about, we have an addition of a citizens' request tool to allow residents to communicate. I didn't know if we have it. I've never used it, but I thought that, you know, the idea's very good, but I thought that was a good addition, if that's something that's new, or I just didn't know about it. So that's, I was pleased with that. And then I have a question on 37, again, this is just functionality, where we blasted 37 email address, 37,000 email addresses, which is a pretty good number, and I just wondered if, are they all Benita, you know, what proportion are residents? So how many, I'm trying to get a number on how many residents we reached there.
Laura Taylor's going to come forward.
Good morning, Laura Taylor, Director of Communications. You hear me okay?
Yes.
So they're not all Benita Springs addresses. When we did this pool of the email addresses about four years ago, we pooled email addresses of anyone who had emailed the city within the last three years at that time, and we actually had approximately about 60,000 email addresses. That we were able to utilize once we sent out legal disclaimers telling them that we were going to add them to the email addresses. And approximately 30,000 did unsubscribe, but slowly, we've been building that back up.
Okay.
So anybody can subscribe to it, you do not have to be a resident.
Obviously, it would be wonderful if we had a very high coverage there, and hope that we continue that process, so that's good.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Jesse?
I just wanted to say, I think that I saw what the potential increases would look like, and I'm not, I would just like to go on the record, and I'm not comfortable with the increase, with doing the increases. And I would also like to entertain the thought of continuing the millage rate as we have for the last six years, steady, not raise it. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura?
I'll wait, and fine, you know.
Okay, okay. Chris?
I was just wondering, under the city manager budget, there's, I didn't see an increase for the city manager as far as the wage rate increase. What's the general increases for city staff overall?
For city staff, we have a line item, $55,000, which we distribute through to the staff, that we look at, try between a 3%, is it a merit increase? Zero to 4%. 0 to 4% increase that we provide based on a merit score, evaluation, but what we do is we balance it within the line item that we have, which is about $55,000. But what we do is we balance it within the line item that we have, which is about $55,000.
And so what's the process for adjusting your salary?
That would be a decision of city council. Mine is a separate contract, so.
Okay.
So it would be a decision of city council.
Do we know what the unemployment rate is in Benita Springs currently?
We likely will be able to get the unemployment rate of Lee County. I will have to see if we can get Benita Springs.
I think I just saw Southwest Florida's 14.3 or something like that.
Okay. Because I was wondering, have we put anything into the budget? Or what's our assumption in the budget in terms of delinquencies on real estate tax payments? Has the county come up with a percentage of what looks like, you know, people having trouble making real estate tax payments?
I have not received any information.
Have we built anything into this budget?
No, we've budgeted the 96%. So that allows 4% from what spilled.
Okay, is that consistent with the prior years or is that an increase?
That's consistent with prior years. I will check with the county to see if they're doing anything different in that regard.
Okay, because I'm concerned with the 14% unemployment rate. There may be people out there that are struggling, that aren't going to be able to pay their taxes. And that may give rise to the necessity of trimming back some of our expenditures later on, once we figure out what that is. I mean, a budget is just a budget. It's, can be adjusted later. But it is a concern that, you know, that we may not get the cash collections on ad valorem taxes and so forth that we anticipate.
Chris, I just looked up, in 34134, according to what I'm looking at, it's 12.9. In 34135, it's 14.6.
Yeah, it's about what Mike said.
So blended probably in the ballpark of 13.45 is my best guess from what I can see.
Better get some development going to get jobs here.
So you good for now?
I have a question of how we're, you know, the way I looked at this budget is I reviewed all the departments. Do we not want to do that or do we want to just, what are we doing here?
We're doing a warm-up round, and then if we want to drill down.
I just want to know how we're going to address the budget here, what our plans are.
Okay.
All right.
Mike, and then Fred, then I'll say a few things, Amy, and we'll do the drill down.
I just had a question for Matt on street sweepers. I know you were working on, was there a new contract coming up? Is that factored into this?
Yes. The extra street. The, there's a couple of things that we factored in this year. Our contract did expire, so we have to rebid that out. But we also increased frequency because, you know, we heard loud and clear, we'd like them swept a little more frequent. And the city benefits from that with water quality credits as well. There's kind of a double benefit. As well as we added new roadways such as Logan Boulevard. And then, you know, the curbing that's going in on Terry Street will allow it to be swept more efficiently as well. So we did plan an increase. I think it was about a $10,000 increase. It was originally about a $25,000 contract. I think we're looking at 36,000 and have some additional funds if we need to, to bring to bear.
Okay, and also on the stormwater maintenance, do we still have that, like, two pools of money, both general fund and the utility? Or is it all utility now?
It's still, the budget, and I'll let Anne speak to this, but it is designed with all of your expenses for stormwater maintenance coming from the general fund. So it's still a two-pot system where really all the expenses are being applied to the general fund.
So if we were to tweak that and do something with the maintenance portion or anything with the fees on the stormwater, we have it baked into the budget where we're still doing maintenance?
Yes.
Accounted for.
Okay, I'm good for now.
Thanks, Mike. Fred?
Yeah, I'd like to piggyback on what Chris Corey said. I think not only are you going to have residential people, I think that may not be as bad as it could be because a lot of the people are living HOAs and they're retired. But the working class, we're going to have problems with the people going into foreclosure and all that. But the other thing is, we've got businesses that are closing up. And when they close up, that means the tax revenue on that business goes poof. So I think, I think we need to boost that historical percentage up. I'd use at least 10%. And hope that I'm wrong, but I'd rather figure a higher value and have money that we get that we didn't count on and figure a lower value allowing for it and find out that we're constantly having to trim the budget back as we go forward. The other thing, I personally think that we should at least consider giving our city managers some kind of a raise. Because I think, isn't this the second year or is it the third? Second full year?
I'll complete my second year in September as permanent.
So I think when we get to that point, we ought to have a good discussion.
Time for a two-year review, it sounds like to me.
Right.
All right. Fred, you have anything else?
Well, I'm with Jesse. I don't think we should consider even talking about raising the tax rate at this point in this year because the economy is not good. That would add insult to injury. I think what we should do today is set the ad valorem max rate at what it is today. And then as we move forward in these other discussions, we could even entertain some possible rollback, possibly.
Right.
Right.
Thank you, Fred.
I would like to see, though, a presentation that says when Irma came in, how much real money in all these balances did we really have? Because I think that gives us a fairer picture of how good or bad we are at this point in time. I know at the last meeting, it was brought up at the very end that we were going to be exploring ways to borrow money to pay for the closing on that property that we settled, that we were going to buy as part of the BG mine thing, which I think is a good deal. It'll act as a water reservoir, it'll do water quality. But I think we need to have, I think we need to be looking at all this together. And I think we need more information before we decide about any tax rollbacks. But I would not be in favor of raising the taxes at this point.
Do we have anything from the last economic downturn, '08, '09? What the ad valorem looked like? If there was any shortfalls coming in or what happened?
It was delayed shortfalls, correct? The shortfalls that we had. Yeah, we can pull that information from what we had previously. I think it was a delayed effect is what happened when the original.
Like, when it first started going down, did we have any issues with people not paying their taxes? That would be the issue now. The delayed one was when the property values all sank. You know, that was the other side of it. But just more is, you know, paying the taxes.
I'll take a look at that history.
If I could add one thing, I think new home construction and in the HOAs, the home sales are going real good right now for a lot of different reasons. So I think we'll come out better. But I think you will have a lot of working-class people that will end up possibly letting their place go into foreclosure and businesses.
Thanks, Fred. Anything else, Fred?
Nope.
Councilman Mo Forbes, we will have an update on the borrowing for the BG mine settlement at the August 19th city council meeting.
Will that also include other funds that we may need to borrow too?
We can take a look at that as well.
Well, I think, I think we ought to do. I think we ought to, I think it'll be a complete thing because we have other needs, I think.
I'm sorry, Fred, what are you, I can't hear what you're saying.
Councilman Forbes asked.
I said, we need, we need to have a more complete discussion because if, for example, we decide to buy that golf course, that takes money. And there's a lot of other things besides buying that piece of property out in the DRG or that we, at least are potentially would add to our needs.
Can I also ask a question on the legal?
You know what I'm going to do now that Fred has finished? I'm going to say a few things, and then we're going to do a speed round, and then we'll do the drill down. How's that sound? All right, does that sound good? Okay, I am in violent agreement, as they say, on the millage rate. So I would like to actually, seeing how we have time, look at a potential rollback, not only make a motion to vote to keep our current millage rate the same. Do we want to do that now? Are we in agreement on that or we want to have some?
No, I'm not in agree with that.
No, we'll hold that.
Let me just give my reasoning. Let me just tell you, I don't think that you can, that's the appropriate approach. I think we should look at the expenditures, see what we think about the budget and start there. Because you know if you do a rollback, you're really going to be looking at expenditures. So let's at least look at the expenditures and see how we're doing it. I'm in favor of maintaining the mill rate, you know, sort of the cart before the horse.
With all due respect, and that's awesome, Amy, and I look forward to the discussion, believe me. But these are my opening thoughts, my opening thoughts.
Well, you just made a motion, that's why.
Yeah, well, okay, no more motions. We'll hold the motions for now. We're in a workshop. But that's where my head's at. My head's at a potential rollback. And my head is at this water tax that we implemented last year. To Chris's point, where people might be having a hard time paying the tax bill, I think we need to look at all taxes currently and look at eliminating that or putting in a moratorium with our water tax. And I think the budget, good job. I would like to suggest that after the speed round, we kind of go in it section by section. And I would like to maybe, Amy or anybody else, if we can go through pages five and six, I think that's a good roadmap to really, would you agree with that, Anne?
Yes, yes, very much.
Okay, dynamite, dynamite. I saw a couple of things, but that's, you know, stuff that'll come later. So those are my opening thoughts, and we'll do a speed round now. Amy?
Well, if we're going to go through it, you know, from the beginning to the end, that's good because I have comments further on. And I agree with, you know, the intent to maintain the mill rate. That's what I'm in favor of.
Sure, absolutely. Thanks, Amy. Jesse?
My speed round question just has to do with the legal stuff. Okay, so we're, it looks like to my calculations about 12.1 million between the two in legal fees. But I thought there was more in the hopper. And I was just curious if we had anything else outstanding legally that we need to have preferably in our mind. Maybe it's not settled, but hey, if we have something coming up that we're going to have to pay for in the legal realm, though we don't have a number, is there anything we should be cognizant of in that area?
From a legal perspective, following Wednesday's council meeting on the Raptor Bay, we'll be done completely on all WCI-related matters. So that, I think at that point, we'll be in, we're in good shape from our single largest expense. We have the BG mine acquisition coming up that's been planned for. The only other case we have where there may be some exposure, and this is exposure that will not come from an unbudgeted account, is the Angler's Paradise, is the quadrant plan. We had a settlement agreement last year. We're moving very close towards resolving that. That will involve some negotiation on settling the final dollar amounts for the acquisition of the right of way. But that is the only thing that I'm expecting any expenditures next year.
All right, thank you.
But Derek, that doesn't add up to 12. You're including the purchase of the property, which is not a legal fee, is it? The property of BG mines.
It's driven by the settlement agreement. I mean, we are getting, we are getting an asset. We're getting a number of assets for consistency's sake. And because it was just the easiest mechanism to do that, we set the purchase of the 248 acres was part of that settlement dollar amount. But we are actually going to be getting more than that property at the end of the day. We're going to be getting the 30 acres at the north side of the beach of the mine. We're also going to get a public access easement across another 200 and something acres in the lakes. So we've tied it all into that just under $5 million purchase price. But really, it goes beyond the acquisition of that 240 acres. But it's all tied to the settlement.
I'm good with that answer.
Amy and Jesse, you good for now with the speed round? Moving right along in the speed round.
Okay. Well, I have a hypothetical, and I don't know if we can answer it. But if this craziness continues and people who own property are not allowed to come into the country to go to their property, do they have to pay their taxes? We forbid Canadians from coming to their homes or Germans or England. Do they pay their taxes? I mean, we started this country based on, you know, no taxes without representation. I don't know.
I'm not aware of any bill that's coming forward to, that would be something the legislature, I think, would take on above the local government level to discuss unilateral, unilateral across the state.
I know, but it's a scary thought.
Thank you, Laura. Chris?
I'm good, let's move on.
Mike?
I'm kind of good right now. The one thing, though, if we are going to talk about getting rid of the water franchise, water tax, we may want to talk about that before you set the millage rate. Because if we scrap that, there's not going to be money for buying golf courses and everything else because that's what that's tied to. So, you know, we don't want to, you know, if we do want to do other things like that, we need to, if we scrap the water tax, we need to possibly raise the millage rate. So that's something to look at there.
Thanks, Mike.
Otherwise, I'm good right now.
Yeah, and talking about the same thing, I brought this up before. But if we, I could even handle that we zero out a good bit of the fee. But we've got to keep the district alive because we've got communities all over the city. Some are in Jesse's district. There's at least one in my district. Communities that want to either do water quality, but more than that, they want to do flood mitigation work that they're going to pay for. They're willing to pay for it, but they want to assess themselves and then get us through the district to get them the 30-year low interest money. Then you put a tax lien on the property so the city's taking no risk. If we do away with the district, that ability is gone. So we're going to lose projects on flood mitigation, which I don't think you want to do. And you're also going to lose some potential water quality. But I can, I can see the need to reduce the rate or even go to zero for a year. But not, and then talk about it next year. But if you destroy the district, you screwed all these little other communities that don't have the money to pay for it in four or five years worth of financing when they can get it much, much cheaper per month or year spread over 30 years.
Thanks, Fred. And Anne, do you, anybody else before, I'm going to have Anne maybe start with the first section on page five? Does that all sound good? Benefit of going last is you get some of your initial questions answered. So with that, Anne, could we go ahead and dive in?
Yes, on page five, if we can start at the bottom section. And as we mentioned, that first column, the unassigned and restricted fund balance, that comes from the audited financial statements and the same chart that you also saw in the handout to come up with the starting balances. Because those were based on the audits as of September 30, 2019. Then the other columns are really just what we expect this year's to be, pulling from the expected revenues that are shown throughout the budget book as well as the expected expenditures. The only thing that's slightly different is the, in the transfers and committed, it says and committed to capital projects because of the fact that we have capital projects that are funded, but we're not actually going to spend the money this year. But this column includes that as if we are spending it because we do a carryover budget. So the funding has to be in place for that budget to carry over. So that's the only kind of difference that occurs there. To get to our projected unassigned fund balance, September 30, 2020. And of course, that's an estimate at this time because it's based on what we actually do. do and spend and actually do collect in the current fiscal year. But as you can see, the net differences then from fund to fund. And of course, with, when you have road impact fee fund, that funds a lot of large projects. You see a big hit there on the $12 million for transfers out. Again, that money all won't be transferred out this year, but the budget carries over. So, it brings us up to the top section, just picks up that beginning fund balance is the ending from where we expect to end FY 2020. And then the numbers in this section are really pulled from the budget document. The reserve calculations, the operating disaster reserves, the operating reserve is based on a formula, the prior 24 months, the average of the prior 24 months, four months worth. And so, that causes that number to increase and then you'll see at the end, it increases as well, based on, again, the new budget and the, that cycle, that previous 24 months. So, those amounts at the top section really are just reflective of what's in this budget request for the FY 2021 year, leaving us in the fund balance for general fund with a projected unassigned fund balance of the 4.2. You can see going down and the net differences where we had some big differences. In the gas tax fund and the road impact fee fund, all the, both the impact fee funds, they are impacted by capital projects. And so, that is something that I would like for us to take a look at, the individual projects for your discussion today as well. The next page, page six is actually, again, starting with the beginning fund balance and then just pulling those budget numbers for each of the fund types and coming down to where we are projecting that we'll end fund balance-wise at the end of the fiscal year, right after this budget for FY 2021. So, the numbers tie back to the page five. Any questions on that?
So, Ann, let's walk through, because Fred had asked about it and we're all looking at it on page six. Let's say a hurricane comes. In the general fund, there's 4.2 million. In the special revenue fund, there's just over 6 million for a total of 10 million too. When, in 2017, when the fees and the bills were coming in for Hurricane Irma, can you maybe give us a refresher on how that would back out of that 10-2 or how that worked?
We never had a cash flow issue at that time, but we did have, I think what was actually happening in that fiscal year, keeping in mind it's spread over multiple fiscal years, it happened September 2017, had a little bit of a hit that year with the expenses but the debris costs really, the bulk of the debris costs hit us in FY 2018. So, in the 2018 year, there's a lot of focus on the hurricane and I wanna go back and take a look at our expenses, but there are some things that we may not have been able to do during that year that, because we were focused on the hurricane and there was so much focus on the debris removal and all those efforts, that a lot of it was, you know, taken care of from a standpoint of the hurricane.
Which needed to be taken care of.
Right.
So, in some ways, we did do something. We did a major work that was needed, which will help us if we're hit again by something like that.
And so, then you saw where we ended our fiscal year in the PowerPoint, our fiscal year 2018 year on slide 13. So, at the end of fiscal year 28, we did have a drop in our unassigned fund balance down to 571,570. So, it did cause that to hit, but we had enough to keep us in the positive.
And that's slide 13, right?
Page 13, yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I do recall that there was a budget transfer that went before council at one point when we thought that we were, again, we're working with expected numbers when you're, during the fiscal year, so you're projecting where you think you're gonna be. And I do recall one budget transfer where I did communicate that I thought that we were dipping into the reserves for that, but it ended up, when the revenues all came in for the fiscal year and the actual expenditures that we did not actually need to dip into and were able to still have a 571,000 unassigned fund balance. So, I think we had a little combination of some shortfalls on some of our other expenditures budgets. You know, we didn't incur all those costs that we had budgeted for and that helped us cover the hurricane expenses budgetarily.
Can we talk about that a little more?
Yes, let's talk about it a little more. I agree.
Did you forget your microphone? Yeah, yeah. Here's my thought or concern. I know how we did in Irma, we did real well. Could we do it a little better? Yeah, because there's things that we didn't get out till late in the game, but they weren't that, like dumpsters and things like that that are, I think they didn't get out on the jobs till almost 10 days after Irma hit. So, we'll, that'll be a little heavier cost. My big concern is, I know what Irma costs. We were exceedingly lucky that we got reimbursed most of the money in, what, three years roughly? But we've written checks for the WCI settlement. We've gonna write a check for the settlement on the BG Mines, the attorney fees, all these other things that were not normal. And so, I can't help but believe that if we had Irma again, that we, even though on paper, we got the money, something's, I don't see how we could spend all that money and still say we're okay, fly right through it and we're not gonna have a problem.
Is it in Bush called it fuzzy numbers, Fred?
Well, fuzzy math.
Fuzzy math. But let's, but it raises the point, Ann, to elaborate.
And let me explain where that is because the 6.3 million dollars, that actually, in that budget year, we were able to record grant revenue from the FEMA grant. And so, getting that $7 million in fund balance is what allowed us to be able to pay for that 6.3 million dollars.
Well, that's my point.
Yeah.
It would have come in and reimbursed us so we have another pot. And that pot's gone because we spent it to pay.
Right, right.
So, I can't, even though we probably will be okay, I don't think we're near as okay as we were when Irma came down. And I'm not sure if the public understands that. I'm not sure that we all understand. I just wanna, that's why I'd like to see some kind of a real detailed discussion that really shows what we were then versus what we are now.
Just gonna say, Fred, it's almost like two pictures.
Yeah, it is.
Picture from this workshop for us in 2017 versus this picture right now. Really, what I think would sum it up.
Absolutely. You're, we're in violent agreement.
Violent agreement. Fantastic. I love it.
If I can ask if I can have some time to pull that together because I would like for it to be, you know, crystal clear as to how we were able to do that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And just go back and start off with the 2017 slide, you know what I mean?
Yes.
And we'll go from there. It'll be, it'll work itself out. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions?
I'm just following up with Fred. So, is there something specific that you're seeing or think we should be doing or is there a specific answer that you feel might be out there? Are you suggesting we need more money or what, where are you going with it? I'm guess, kinda curious.
Well, where I'm going with it first is I want everybody at the table here to understand where we are, what we had when we started before Irma, where we're at now because I think that we're, I know we're not nearly as well off as some of us may think we are. And I mean, I'm not being disrespectful, but I think also the public needs to know too because I don't, hopefully, we're not gonna have another Irma this year, but you never know. Might have a next year, may not have it for 10 years. If I knew how, when we'd have it, I could make money in the stock market every day.
60 years.
Six years.
Six-oh, 60.
Okay.
Almost to the day. If you think about it, Donna and Irma, 60 years, almost to the day. Okay, people, move on.
Anything else before Ann moves on immediately?
I was just gonna follow up there. I mean, I don't, just looking at the numbers that are here, our unassigned fund balances, our reserves, operating and emergency, we should be able to manage things. Where we might not be able to manage things is because what's different now is that we clearly have a number of infrastructure projects that we are trying to accomplish that is supposed to mitigate the effects of Irma. We didn't have any of those operating before. So, it's, we, I think from a strategic point of view, the council have to decide whether we are really going to be water quality and quantity stewards, which is, I think, our first objective and what we're willing to do about that. We have the projects, but there's not one of them that isn't less than 10 or 20 million dollars and we have more than one. So, that's the issue. But I think as far as the emergency kinds of expenditures, we should be fine, just because we have a lot of, we have some reserve in here, as long as we keep, we don't keep adding things to the budget that's not already included here. That's where we have to be careful. But again, I'd be curious to have Ann review that and see what exactly we did that and what are we really talking about? Are we talking about, are we capable of handling an emergency situation? I think probably the answer is yes. And what other people have done in those situations is we gratefully didn't have to do, is they took out a loan to take care of it. That's what was done in Sandy because I'm familiar with that. My sister was on the council in the shore area that was devastated.
Sanibel as well.
Yeah, yeah. They took out a loan to take care of it. We didn't have to do that. And if, if the number was not $6 million or whatever we spent, it was $12 million, that would be an alternative and thank God, our debt burden is very minimal. So, from those points of view, I think we can assure our residents that we're in reasonably good shape, but let's not go crazy and spend a lot of money. That's all. That's the point I was gonna make.
And I think we need to open up our economy. I think we have to let our businesses get back to work.
Anybody else? Ann, you have the floor. Or are there more questions, I guess, maybe on page five and six?
I'm good.
We're gonna flush out, I guess, Ann, that 10-2, right, that we have set aside right now for capital projects and operations and we'll juxtapose that to 2017, maybe where we were heading into Irma, right? I think we'll do that. Okay. I think that would answer Fred's question and my question simultaneously.
An area which we don't really have control over about is the economy, which is what Laura brought up, but we have on page seven, some indicators of where that revenue that we get is the sharing revenue that we get from outside industries like the state and all the special, the communication taxes. We already are below what has been in the past and if we get a recovery, then those numbers will go back up. If the, if the economy continues to go down, then those revenues will not recover. So, we have a revenue shortfall that is, I see currently as a direct result of where we are in a weak economic environment and it looks now like this, you know, we're probably gonna have an issue next year and our next year's budget is gonna be more of a problem. So, I, that's why I think I focused on unassigned fund balances because I'm not looking at this strictly a one-year thing. I'm looking at it so more cushioned so we can anticipate things that we really don't have any control over. So, that's where I'm coming from strategically.
Right, and that's a great, great premise. And then you just have to, and of course, you don't have to, but in my mind, which is absolutely what you said, I agree with 100%. And then look at the new that's coming in.
Correct.
Yeah. Really, you know me, I like to keep it simple. If we could do that, that would be great.
But we can do, but we can do something. We have put our economy into a coma and I just think it's malfeasance on our part to continue this. It's not based on science, so now it's based on emotion. And we've never treated a pandemic like this in our history. We always focus on the targeted, you know, victims, basically. Instead, we shut the whole economy down and we keep it down. We keep it partially. We need to just be reasonable, ask our commissioners for control to open up our economy without restrictions. You wanna stay home, stay home. We are doing this deliberately and we're killing the restaurants and the small businesses. That is the heart of our city and we're elected to lead and there is no science regarding the masks. The experts don't even follow the own advice that they're giving. They contradict themselves regularly and COVID-15? Fauci laughed at how compliant the Japanese were.
Was that at the Washington Nationals game?
No, no, this is, this is COVID-15. We called it SARS. And he and Matt Lauer were yucking it up on TV, laughing at the Chinese, were all wearing masks and saying, oh, how compliant they are. I bet there are people around the world amazed at how compliant and how immediately Americans just stopped and went home and stayed home based on false numbers. We didn't do it in 68. We knew it was gonna be a horrible flu year. We called it the Hong Kong Flu. Sorry, China. But we didn't close the schools. Over 100,000 people died.
Point of order.
And flu attacks everyone.
Point of order.
COVID-19 attacks 65 and older. The average age of the folks who died in Italy was 80 years old.
Thank you, Laura.
Yep.
Can we get back onto the budget as a...
Yeah, well, our budget is dependent on our income.
Budget is dependent on...
On our businesses and we're killing it. We're killing our business.
Laura, I understand your point of view and Chris, I understand yours. We're in different times, folks. We're in uncharted waters, but I agree. There's cause and effect here.
Yeah.
Effect and cause, cause and effect, environment, economy, economy, environment. Fred?
Well, I think the economy shutdown started up at the top and then was ratified by the governor and either, Lee County cannot undo something that the governor says 50...
The governor wants individual communities to make their own decision.
Right, but right...
Southwest Florida could get together, the commissioners lead and get us... We didn't even have it. We had Lee Memorial and NCH here. They both said they lost over $50 million a month because you know what? No one came in, okay? COVID wasn't an issue and all the numbers were...
What I'm gonna do right now, and you know me, I'm generally pretty loose on this, but on this subject, I'm just gonna, let's not interrupt each other. Everybody can talk, but Fred, you had the floor and Laura, we can come back to you.
No, that's fine.
No, but you know what I mean? I just think we need to talk through it without interruption for a moment.
I agree that we should do everything we can to keep the economy open. I don't wanna see anything shut down, but county commission has some influence, but the governor right now has got these state things. I'm not saying the county can't go do it. I'm in favor of the county trying to loosen it up. So, I would support that, but you need, I think we need to go on with the budget, as Chris said.
Thank you, Fred. Laura?
Yep.
Okay. Anybody else at the moment? Moving right along, Ann.
I would like to point out that one of the handouts that was distributed to you today after Councilwoman Corombo mentioned... after Councilwoman Corumba mentioned about some of the revenue shortfalls, we received the information from the state. The state posts estimates on revenues that they distribute to municipalities and local jurisdictions. And unfortunately, it didn't come out until July 27th, after our budget book was prepared. But I do have a summary that shows some variances between what's in this draft budget versus the state estimate. On the local government half-cent sales tax, the state estimate is 207,760 below what's in this book. The state shared revenues, the state estimate is 107,499 above what's in this book. And then the local communications services tax, the state estimate is 54,173 less. So it's a net difference to the general fund would be a reduction from what's in this book of 154,434. So it is gonna be staff's recommendation at the, at the point where we're asking for council to consider, but the next draft, we would, would wanna adjust to the state estimates. And then the revenues that affect the gas tax fund, that nets to a positive, basically that our, the state estimates are higher than our book. But again, I'd like, since we have those estimates, they've had economists working on their numbers and all those calculations, so I think we would be wise to go with those recommendations for, for the budget.
So as we receive updated information, we'll be generating that to you for replacement within the budget book as we get everything, as new revenue updates come to us.
But Ann, is it, this is for the estimated or the draft budget? This, this doesn't really reflect the hit that we are gonna probably be taking because of a shortfall in the economy? Because we've already gotten an adjustment, estimated adjustments to those shared revenues. Isn't that correct? Because the reason why it was being discussed was there was a concern that we were going to have a short, an ongoing shortfall in revenues other than the ad valorem taxes.
That's correct.
This, this has already been adjusted from, the July estimate had already adjusted for the shortfall in the economy.
These still July estimates that they released relate to the next fiscal year?
Is that page nine? Are we looking at page nine?
It doesn't matter.
Oh, but I, but, but, because if you look at page nine, I was just.
The point I'm making, I thought we could look at, if you look at what the estimates were for 2019 for these things, or what they were actually, there is a shortfall that already recognized the fact that the economy was turning down. That's why we got an estimate for seven, at 727. And in addition, beyond the July one, there's more, another adjustment that's come in. But it's clear that one thing that we need, I think we need to be concerned about in the city is that if this weakness in the economy continues into next year, that those revenues will, will continue to be under pressure.
Correct.
And that's, again, full circle to my point that I was making, is that I think we really have to be careful to make sure that any kind of reserves or unassigned balances are maintained at a level that we have, at least historically, which they appear to be, so I'm happy to see that. And where I'm not completely concerned about the potential for another hurricane hit, knowing that if we had to, because of our credit rating, we could, we could, we could borrow. So I wouldn't suggest that we raise taxes in order to give us more protection at this point. That's what I'm trying to think through in my own mind.
Thank you, Amy. Jessie?
No, I, I'm good.
Laura?
Nope, good.
Okay. Chris, Mike, or Fred? Three names at once, okay.
Yeah, well.
Chris, ooh, Chris, you're up, you're in.
I would point out that many of the largest corporations in the U.S. right now have got no budget in place for their next fiscal year, because they, the unknowns are just too great. I'm not suggesting that we not have a budget. We obviously have to have a budget from a legal standpoint to justify the tax rate. But I do think along in terms of what Amy is saying, that the important thing is to set some benchmarks as we go forward, saying, these are the critical financial ratios, financial landmarks that we need to maintain in terms of unassigned surplus, in terms of what we, what we wanna challenge as the goals with respect to departmental expenditures, what we want to prioritize with respect to CIP projects and so forth at this point. To me, this thing is, is going to be more of a, we're gonna, we're gonna look at this budget more than once in the next 12 months. We're gonna probably look at it every quarter and see if there's things that we need to adjust going forward. And at some point, I think we're gonna come down and say, well, we got some, we got some things here, some thresholds that we don't want to penetrate in terms of where our unassigned fund balance is, in terms of, these are the absolute must-do projects that have to get done. These are, you know, we don't want our cash balances to fall below a certain level. We don't want cash hung up for out-year expenditures in CIP that could really be used if we needed it. So that's sort of my view of where we're on the budget. We're gonna do this workshop, we're gonna have, we're gonna finalize it next month. But I, I think we're gonna look at it time and again over the next 12 months.
I think that's sound advice, Chris. Get maybe monthly, quarterly, whatever. I won't tell Ann how to do that. Yeah, okay, very good, Chris. Thanks. Mike?
Yeah, just on the, what we were just looking at with the estimates on the communication services tax and the half-cent. With things still shut down, you know, of course, the half-cent's gonna take a hit. But also the communication services tax, with everybody staying home, they've been streaming more, they've probably realized that they really don't need to pay for cable anymore, and they're, you know, I think more people are gonna be switching away from cable, so that's gonna hurt the communication services tax also. But I just had a question on the half-cent. I know Amazon charges tax, but do we, is that like state level? Do, do we get taxed from Amazon and Walmart if they buy online, Target if they buy online? Because a lot of people shifted to buying online because they're too afraid to go to the stores.
That's all handled at the state level.
Do, so we don't get anything there, or?
Well, we, we just get, we just get payment, we get a deposit from the state. We don't get, we don't see the detail.
But do you think we're, we're getting taxed out of that? Like, if, if I were to buy, instead of going to Publix, if I were to have all my groceries shipped to home with either Amazon or Walmart?
Much less.
Are we still gonna see, well, groceries, you don't really pay that much tax on, but anything I buy?
I think we get half-cent, we get the half-cent part of the sales tax, but I don't know if that is proportionate statewide or if it's localized data.
Yeah, but I, I do.
Fred and then Laura.
I do a fair amount of business with Amazon, and I can tell you that when you order stuff from them, they're not charging state sales tax. That's a big issue up in Tallahassee. They were gonna do something about it in the last legislative session, and they kicked the can down the road.
But I, I know, I do, I do pay taxes.
Pay tax. It depends on the location. I think with Amazon, it depends if you, if the business is located in Florida that they're shipping to, then you, you could see a, a state, a tax. And if the, if the primary business of that Amazon, that shipping may be from another state, you may not see it, but yes.
I know as soon as they opened up a warehouse in Florida, I started seeing sales tax on stuff with them.
Most of the stuff I buy, I don't.
I think we can reach out to the legislature to find out if the local sales tax is distributed to where the business is located, that's shipping from. So does, does Lakeland receive that, or does the fact that it's shipped to Lee County, do we receive that? I think that's something we probably need to follow up with the legislature.
Because I mean, if, if we don't see the half-cent from that, then it's a double-edged sword. People aren't spending the money in the community, and we're losing revenue too, so that's, you know, we're gonna have to make that up somewhere else.
I think maybe one of the things we wanna do, when we have that legislative thing, the mayor at that point should bring that up at that big thing they always have up at the old Edison School or whatever they call it, Southwest.
It's in January, January.
Thank you. Thank you, Fred. Laura, you've been waiting patiently.
Thank you. Well, the other thing that you're forgetting, Mike, as we get home deliveries, is that brick and mortar's gonna shut down. I had a, I had a person tell me, there was no one in the store, Petco, I was six feet away from her, and she's, she had a mask on, I did not. My doctors have told me of the consequences of wearing a mask and have advised me not to. But there was no one in the store, six feet apart, and she said, you know, you can call and have it delivered. I said, yes, and in six months, you won't have a job. So the consequences of all of us shopping online, Nordstrom's closing, Last Call is closing, you can't imagine the other stores that are all gonna start, because you don't even, I haven't even touched the restaurants that won't be able to survive. Haven't. Perkins, anyway.
Okay. Thank you, Amy. Anybody else at the moment? Okay, Ann. Cruising right along.
If you'd like, Mayor and Council, we can move on to the CIP unless there's additional questions you'd like to go through in the.
Sure. Yeah, what, Councilwoman Corey's saying we take a break. Why don't we take a 10-minute break? I have, why don't we, 12:35. Is that good for everybody? All right. Halftime show is over. It's probably not even halftime. Did the first quarter warning is, we're gonna start the second quarter here of the meeting. How's that? Ann, you're in place, beginning of the second quarter. Here we go.
I, I think we were gonna go through the CIP.
Okay, great.
If you wanna. So what the, one of the additions to the CIP, you see differently. Councilwoman Corey had asked previously that we could, at previous meeting, that we could provide some direction as to, oh, I'm sorry, there's no PowerPoint for this one. We're just on, we're in the budget book.
99, under.
Which page, exactly?
95.
Page 95.
Okay, thank you.
And there's a tab, Capital Improvements Plan.
Gotcha. 99.
And so what's new to this is you'll see color categories as well that delineate whether a project is in the first stage, which will be yellow, which is planning, meaning that it has been a priority, identified as a priority, identified as, as of potential projects that could come from it to look at as, as planning, where we have not moved to significant expenses at this point. The next stage you'll see is, is the grayish blue is design, and.
I, I think we're missing that page.
I don't have a color coordinate. It should be one of the bigger pages.
You said 95, but then I morphed right over to page 99.
99, it's folded, that's why.
It's a fold-out pages.
I got you, there you go. Thank you.
It's right before other information.
It's at 160.
Okay. There it is.
Oh, there we are.
All righty.
Should be 95, 96, 97.
But it's not in order.
Oh, in our book, if you look past page 161 is actually.
Oh, I'm sorry. Under the tab, Capital Improvements.
See digitally, it's right where it should be.
For other.
Saying.
Debbie, behave. Some of us are technically challenged.
April doesn't lie.
Yeah, there it is. Okay, Ann.
So with the bluish-gray design, that is mean, for example, for the Spring Creek, Venus Springs Golf Course project, we've committed contractual design fees to that. We've also committed to contractual grants, but it has not been yet final construction plans, which you'll see is green, which means that the project is ready to go to bid and ready to construct. We did have one other category, which is complete, or two other categories, in that you'll see that as Ann accounts for these, sometimes there's some little, there's some remaining budget, such as some costs associated with the stormwater utility tax and fee. And additionally, you'll see in a brown color, for example, on page 96, minor road sidewalk and drainage improvements, those are categorized as reoccurring. They are, they are continuing each fiscal year. And one correction we need to make is under environmental protection, the fourth strategic priority, you'll see beach renourishment 2024, that's a resolution of council, that should be reoccurring each, each year. We plan fiscal, fiscally to add the $110,000 for the beach renourishment, so that it can be captured when the five-year plan is needed. So with that, we're happy to go through any of these individually, give you updates. They are prioritized in the, in the city council's list as strategic priorities, as stormwater first, transportation, environmental protection, community aesthetics, government transparency, and then other expenditures as well, other capital expenditures.
When I, Amy, I think we're about to say the same thing, but you.
No, I, I don't think so.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
But I went through the CIP project forms, and the one that I flagged, just in general, was the Goodbred, you know, Dixie Moon thing. We have $100,000 in there, in there for 2020. Are we actually going to do something with that? Because what are our plans? I mean, I'm in favor of doing something with it because it's incredible eyesore, and.
So, so the Public Works Department, Ellie, has been applying for historic preservation grants, and I believe that was considered to be potential match as well for the grants. We're not, I don't think we've got any successful news yet, but I, I believe that's the direction that they're looking for, is to, is to have that as the match for grants. I think it's a larger project than the $100,000. And there's also has to be some additional direction from council in the future on the use of that as well.
But we think we might hear about the grant in 2020, but it's unlikely that we'll do anything in 2020? Is that the timeframe?
You might move the project to design in 2020 if the grant's awarded. You'd sign a grant contract, and you'd probably have some preliminary design work or cost-benefit analysis to provide back to the state.
Okay. Thank you.
We weren't gonna say the same thing, Amy, but that's, but that's good. That's a very good point, actually. I was wondering about that. But so where these are in categories, design is blue, construction is green, planning is yellow, complete is complete. So where complete is complete, Ann, and there's numbers in there?
Mm-hmm. So for example, you'll be looking at.
Stormwater utility, general fund, 41,471. But it says complete in the project phase.
So that'd be carryover money. And, you know, some projects, when, when we're real fortunate, we actually budget just the right amount or a little bit more, and that the dollars aren't spent. So the carryover happens, I believe, Ann, in November of this year, so it kind of lags behind. So it's kind of like a technicality for, for the current year that you're looking at. You see that there's carryover dollars, but when you come November, you'd have the opportunity through an action of council to move that money to wherever you so chose.
Or, or a transfer could be done in the current year.
Or in the current year.
Were you a finance major at Notre Dame?
No, no, I wasn't. I've just been paying attention.
Well, very good math, Feeny, quite impressive.
I slept at a Holiday Inn.
Right, but then if you look at Logan Boulevard, that project's complete, and that came out of the gas tax, you know, and that's 6,985. So really, what you're doing, you're reconciling.
Correct.
A remainder from a non-perfect financial year. Okay. But back to the point of these categories, do we wanna look at or get an update? I mean, Amy, were you thinking we hold the line here with these or different phases of?
I am, from what I.
Maybe we're, I think we're talking about the same thing and might be looking at it differently.
If we, if we look at our objective.
Yes.
Our objectives individually, our strategic priorities.
Right.
And look at everything under there, personally, you know, I don't see anything under our first priority that we should not follow up on. So I'm in favor of all that stuff. So I don't suggest we take it out of the budget. I don't think we push it out. I think we have to keep that money there. I think it's so incredibly important to what we're doing in our city, so that's my opinion. So I don't know what anybody else wants to say about that.
Okay.
I agree.
I agree.
So I don't, and then I.
I have disagreement with Amy's point, just so, you know, we can walk through. Is everybody in with that general statement that she made about sticking with our priorities? Does that sound good to everybody? Are there any asterisks in anybody's mind at this point?
I mean, sticking with our priorities and also sticking to the things I think that are in this, I, I don't. are in this, I don't want to say, hey, if there's something, you know, under a different portion than just water quality, that we're going to say, well, this isn't one of the priorities, so it's out the window. So I would say yes with the fact that I, the things that are in here, I don't see, if somebody has an issue with something on here, and you're seeing it now, bring it up now, and let's talk about it. Because I don't see anything in here where I'm like, this is egregious, this is, this is really bad, I have a problem with this. So if anybody else does, it'd probably be helpful to staff and the rest of us that we would know.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So now, is everybody good for now with what Amy had said?
Yes.
Okay. Fred, Mike, everything good down there? Okay. Thank you, Amy.
So should we do transportation now?
Sure, sure, why not?
I guess I'm, the only, I had a question, because in one of these individual project forms, I can't remember what the amount was, but they said we were going to work on implementing the Benita Beach Vision. And my question is, how do we do that? I thought the only way we did it is if we had a project, we encouraged them to implement our vision. Is there something, something other than that?
The other opportunity, for example, when you went through a land development change, zoning process and a D O, we did work, for example, with the Naples for Myers Greyhound tract. We, through that process, you secured a potential right-of-way to create a quadrant at that area. Down the road, parts of that would be is, there would be a responsibility on the city's end for a public road to partner with them. So we, we have a building fund base for opportunities. So when the development process comes for, forward, and there's a, they're getting closer to the location of that road, it may be beneficial for the city to participate in that, to have the roadway built. There's also other development applications that go through community development where recommendations are made, that the pathway be provided as well. And so if it becomes an opportunity for the city to participate at those times, we've also previously discussed that we may want to have a vision, a separate landscaping vision for the different sectors that were identified through the tool of the study, that you may want a different landscaping theme for Benita Beach Road west of forty-one, and then a different feel between forty-one east to old forty-one, and then a different look by the interstate. All of that would have to be coordinated with Lee County and most likely at the expense of the city to implement any of that landscaping.
Okay, thank you.
I think we should, as Matt pointed out, get the projects that are almost near done, completed. Let's focus on those and get them completed, and perhaps not start anything new until we know what our funding will be, or our revenues will be.
Would like to point out that there's, in the column for the unspent budget as of July 31, 2020, there's some highlighted projects that are in purple. Those are amounts that are going to be transferred from the multi-use path, ways and sidewalks, and to other projects. So those transfers will be coming before council for, for your approval. But I think Matt wanted to show them because that's, he's earmarked.
That's the, the carryover, carryover dollars from that multi-use pathway project, basically being driven out to individual projects, which is how we've used that CIP item. So, you know, you, you collect a pot of money under multi-use paths, and then as council directs us, you know, we go out, design them, and then when we get the costs, you move the money out of the, the multi-use path to the specific project. So essentially, we had collected enough in carryover that, that all of those funds are really coming from the previous year for those individual projects.
So Matt, you're earmarking. They don't allow that in Congress anymore.
Oh, it was a poor choice. I was not a finance major, so poor choice of words.
The purple is the money that's being transferred to that.
All right, I don't want to hear.
The purple is the money that's being transferred to that. It's not.
It's going to be coming to the.
Yeah, it's not coming out of that, it's going to that.
Right, but it's coming back. You're reloading that, and that, so you're pretty much, you're, you're using it as a piggy bank, and then you're refilling it. As long as you're refilling it, I'm fine, because that, that rails to trails. I want to ride, I'm, I'm all over that thing. I don't want that money to, to not end up back there at some point. I don't mind using it, but I want to make sure that that continues to go back where it belongs.
We have that as an individual project as well, but you're correct in the overall concept that the, the multi-use path kind of acts as a holding, a holding area for the, you know, the notion that the city will develop those kinds of projects. And then as we develop them, we do, then re-apply the funds as those projects come online.
So Council, the transfers out are come, are not coming from the Sun Trail Rails to Trails, that's its own separate line. And we're looking to replenish that in fiscal year, between two fiscal years, '21 and '22, the 200,000 and the 282,000.
That's great. There won't be none in the next two years. I'm cool with that. Thank you.
I don't know if you have this, but I, I think it would be useful, you know, we have the funding from various things. We have general fund, we have gas tax, road impact, all this other stuff. Is, on these projects, on an annual basis, if we could show that this amount of money is coming out of the gas tax fund for that year, or one of the other special funds, so that we could just see how we're paying for all this on an annual basis, particularly for our next fiscal year, where we think we might be tight. It's obvious that we could pay for all this stuff, because you have it in the budget, right?
Especially if Matt Feeney's going to keep earmarking. He's got to be clear on what we're doing.
On page eighty, ninety-eight, you do see the totals that are coming.
Which page? I'm sorry?
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight, you're saying?
Last one of these colored.
Oh, sorry, I keep hitting my.
Is that, I was going to say, I almost thought it was me. I was just, okay.
No, it's because I hit these things.
No, that's okay.
Down at the bottom, you see what's being budgeted.
You already have that. Okay, that's where I was asking.
And then if you look at the individual fund statement, you see a transfer to the Capital Projects Fund in that same amount, coming from that fund.
So we have a pretty good hit on the next fiscal year, 17 million coming there.
The first is the carryover, right, Anne? The first is the carryover, and then the new additional is in the 21.
So let me understand, the 17,902 for the 2021 column on page 98, that's the money that we're budgeting to go for capital projects, capital improvements this year? We're pulling that money out of these funds down below?
That's correct. Each one of those funds, you'll see a transfer out of that fund to come to Capital Projects. And that first column is actually the unspent budget as of July 31, so it's not the expected for FY20. It was just, this is where we are right now, the most recent month end.
But that represents cash that's in the bank. The 60 million.
Pretty much at this point, because I have to be careful. I have to look at where we are at the, in the fiscal year, because the cash would depend upon the revenues coming in.
We have 60, so we have 60 million, but according to this, we have 60 million. This is all funded. We're going to add 17 million to the funding for this year.
And we'll be getting more cash, you know, during this fiscal year. Did you want to talk about the transportation, the next section?
Next section, everybody good to move on?
I'm not sure I quite followed. Could you, I'm not following that table on 98 on the bottom. Say it one more time. The first column is the unspent budget.
As of July 31.
That, that's, this is, these are for projects that we've already assigned to those funds?
Correct, correct. These are projects that are already.
These are assigned budgetary items for each of those funding sources that hasn't been spent, all right?
That's correct.
And then the 2020, 21 column, those are things that we're going to spend in that fiscal year?
Correct.
All right.
And, and the reason why the unspent budget balance is shown there is so that someone can look and see how much money is available for that project.
Okay. So conceivably, if we don't get a whole lot more revenues in those things, we'll subtract, like, for example, on the general fund, 5 million from the 12 million that is unspent, and we'll end up with around 7 million, just in that first row. Is that correct?
No, that's, that's, that's a cumulative. Right now, we have unspent budget in the general fund of 12,247.
Correct.
But we'll spend that down some more this fiscal year. But, but if we still have a balance, let's say we have $5 million as of September 30.
Right.
That's going to be budget that will carry into FY2021. So that you would add to the 5 million that's in, I picked five, should have picked a different number, but you'd add to the 5,042,739 going forward to have the budget be whatever was unspent from the prior fiscal year, plus what is budgeted for that fiscal year.
And to confirm, we may not spend all the 17, it could be, that could be carried over as well. For example, the, the stormwater, the golf course project, we, we do know that there's deliverables in the 2021 fiscal year, but there will be additional deliverables in the '22 fiscal year as well. So, so this, these are for planning purposes, that it's very likely there will be carryover again as well.
But this table on the bottom suggests that we can manage the CIP that is in these other tables as proposed.
Yeah. That's, that's one I want to mention. I have not done the five-year financial projections yet, so we may need to, to make some modifications to these out years. We do know that the FY2021, based on the revenues that we have, can, can be met.
Okay.
The years beyond that.
We haven't, we're not sure.
Still need to do a financial projection.
Okay, well, let me make sure I understand. Let's go back to the, the Parks Project. Just, just take a simple example. We have baseball complex master plan. We have unspent budget of 491,000. We're planning to, in fiscal year 2021, spend 550,000. So we're in effect budgeting another, I misread it, 491, we're budgeting another roughly 60,000, and that, that will provide all the funds to build what we need to build for that complex? Is that what this is saying?
I'm going to ask Nicole to come forward.
What line are you on?
We're on.
What page?
It's page ninety-seven.
We're on 97, about two-thirds of the way down. It talks about baseball complex master plan.
Okay, I see it.
So right now, we have 491,707 of the unspent budget, and is this saying in fiscal year '21, we will spend a total of 550,000?
We're adding it.
Adding it, adding it.
You would add them together.
Okay.
Yep. Where we're at, Nicole Perino, Parks and Recreation Director, for the record, where we're at is we actually, coming forward to you on Wednesday, is accepting a GMP for 985,000. So that, that's adding those two together. So the project would start now and then continue through next year, because it wouldn't finish up until January. So you would add those two funds together.
All right.
And that is just for, that's for phase one?
Yes. Yes, that's phase one only. That's not the overall.
Right.
Complete redo of the system. It's just the ADA improvements and some landscape and landscaping.
And drainage.
Yes, and drainage.
So this is really just, this is a funding schedule?
Correct.
Yep.
It shows how much is funded out of the unspent budget, and we're, how we're going to fund it going forward. But we, what we don't have here is the years in which it's actually going to be spent, or when we think it's going to be spent.
Correct. Ideally, we would budget based on when we expect it to be spent, but for these projects, it's very difficult.
Anybody, anything else at this point?
And just a point for clarification, some of these, for example, when they're, when they're, when they are part of federal grants, when we apply for the grant, we're required to show that we have the match in place as we move forward, and then they sometimes provide us a phase one and a phase two of those grants. So the first phase may be just the design and cost-benefit analysis. The second phase is the construction.
I've got a question. I saw lighting, that would be page 98, just, just for point of reference, really, but Logan Boulevard, landscape and lighting, what are we using for lighting these days, and how compliant is our lighting across the city?
Oh, that's a great question. We, Council.
Notre Dame.
No finance. No, I was not a finance major. The, the city, about this time last year, the non-decorative streetlights, so the ones that FPNL maintains for the city, we commissioned FPNL to convert all of those to LED. So that is underway. They, we had a member of the public a few meetings ago mentioning Hickory Boulevard has been converted. You'll see, it's a very low-profile fixture, but they've been moving throughout the city retrofitting those. Concurrently, the.
Matt, let me ask it this way. Is Benita Springs a dinosaur in our lighting?
Oh, no, no.
Like toddlers, middle age? Where are leaders?
We're probably at some level of leadership. In this budget, that's what I was, was going to point out next. So, so the main streetlights are being converted. The downtown project introduced LED streetlights, which is the cutting edge with it, what, three years ago? And then the remaining decorative streetlights, we've been evaluating that technology on Terry Street, east of the Roundabout, as well as on US 41. And that is an LED technology that is kind of a plug-in place, and that is retrofitting the remainder of our inventory is in this current coming-up budget. So as far as where we are, we're basically retrofitting to LED and probably ahead of several of our sister communities when it comes to that.
Is solar playing to any of this, or is that?
No, no, this is, these lights, no, short answer's no. Your question about Logan, that's a little different animal. Logan is lit at the Roundabout. That was part of the, the project that installed. That corridor was not lit, obviously, you know, prior to the roadway being constructed, and the Streetlight Committee really kind of gave guidance that we should look at retrofitting it with lights in the future, should the, should the demand arise. And so we, we really haven't received any feedback, plus or minus, so that, you know, that's carried in the, the budget here for follow-on years. That's what those dollars are for. But right now, it's, you know, we haven't had an increased demand for streetlighting along the Logan Corridor. It is close to homes. We did install with the roadway conduits to make that project much easier, a lighting project, if you do choose to do it. But right now, it's, it's kind of in the outer gears. That would be new install.
I'll ask a question, and then I'll move on, or let anybody else speak. Is there any opportunity for companies, let me just say, I mean, is there any place in town, it's going to sound odd, but where we could experiment with our lighting? Where if one of these companies that wanted to work with us on solar, or want, you know, kind of off-the-grid technology, is there a place or a way to work that in? And it, maybe it's a bigger headache than it's worth, maybe it's not. Let me just ask it that way. Is there a place?
Yeah, I would have to, we'd have to look at what that.
If the private sector wanted to work with the city of Benita Springs on solar, is there a place for us to acknowledge that, or how does that work?
We'd probably have to understand what that is. I mean, you know, to, to be able to figure out whether we have a place or not. I mean, that's, we'd need more detail. I mean, that's, we'd need more detail. What I can tell you is, you know, our...
Is that bureaucratic answer? No, I get it!
No, I'll give you a simple answer. Our streetlights are on 480 volts, which is high voltage. LED runs on low voltage, 110 volt. We have found a local manufacturer that is exclusive, that provides a retrofit kit that we do not have to replace the head, the lamp fixture, only the guts, and we don't have to step down the voltage within all of our existing infrastructure. And that is sitting in this budget. As far as solar goes, you know, we'd have to look at what that would be, you know, I don't know. But we have worked with local folks to be able to understand how to retrofit our decorative stuff. Obviously, FPNL had an off-the-shelf solution for their infrastructure, and that's being implemented now.
But it's hard to be green and off-the-grid if at this point the expenses don't show that it would be effective, correct?
We'd have to look at it.
I got it. No, I guess, so that, but so many communities are in the toddler stage with that, if not infant.
Sure.
Thank you. I've said more than enough, but thank you very much.
On Logan, Collier County doesn't have streetlights.
No, there's no, I forgot to mention that. There are no...
If there was some call for, possibly for walkers, we could do something lower for pedestrian level instead of doing, you know, the high streetlights. That would have less effect on the houses right there.
Sure. We installed more conduit than you typically would for something like that, for that very eventuality. So there's conduits to allow for streetlights in the middle median, there's also conduits to allow for streetlights along the pathway, or some kind of low-level lighting.
Can I just use Logan for a point of reference, because it made me think about it?
No, I understand.
Thank you. Council? All right, and the floor is yours, Arlene.
Environmental protection was our fourth strategic priority after transportation. And we were able to secure some of the FEMA funding, the HMGP grants for land acquisition within the DRG, and that's how you see the water, land acquisition from willing sellers isn't moved, been moved to the planning. And as I said, there was a correction for beach renourishment that should be reoccurring, reoccurring.
Do you design it?
Yeah, there's a, that needs to be corrected. It should be reoccurring expense. It's a resolution passed by council to annually place the needed monies for beach renourishment.
But we actually do, we don't just do designs, right?
Correct. We, it's, the county does, it's a partnership with the county, and we have, in our local agreement with them, but we have to provide our cost share.
Design was a miss...
Yeah, it's an error, that should be reoccurring.
It should've said reoccurring, not design, and been brown instead of blue.
Everybody studying the budget, drilling down further with their eyes. Yeah, I was going to say, do we, any questions on anything, or Ann, or Arlene, or Notre Dame over there?
Oh.
Rooney, anybody? Amy?
I would, I did look at the attorney's budget, I just would like a recap on how your fees are working. I know that when we entered into the contract, we looked at something to see if we underbilled or overbilled, and we somehow got a, we got a refund or something, but...
Are we leaving CIP to go to that now, or?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, that's why I was just kind of feeling like last call to move on to the next section, or what do you, how's everybody feeling?
With environmental, I'm good on those three things.
Everybody good? I think we can move along. Thank you. Thanks, Amy.
Our community aesthetics is the next, I'm sorry. One of the new items I did want to point out is acquisition of public art, and you'll see, this is a transfer out of the general fund into the CIP, and I know Councilman McCollum could speak more to this, but the idea was that they could start to have rollover budgets, so they have an opportunity to actually go after larger pieces of artwork.
And also to help with their planning, and I don't know, maybe others are aware of this, and Nicole could speak to it, is that the River Park is evolving, is hoped to be evolved into a sculpture park, and there's some infrastructure spending that's in the budget to do, like, lighting and electric, you could talk about the details of it, but that's to get the infrastructure ready to receive sculptures in there. And again, if you're going to plan a new park, it's, you don't want to do all the expenditures in one year, so if we put it in the CIP budget, it will help to do with the planning and the execution of the idea that we want to have a sculpture park down there. And if in the future, there's any area of the city where we want to have a really significant sculpture, we could, and it costs more than $50,000, which it hasn't in the past, the sculptures have been a lot less than that, but we could plan it over a two-year period. So that's why we had, the committee had suggested and offered that we change it from an operating line item to a CIP line item, but it's a 50,000, it's the same that has been the budget for how many years?
Probably five.
Five years or something?
Yeah.
So it's the same budget, but it's just in a different spot.
Look, Galaxy of Moon Art, that sculpture was over $20,000.
I, well, I said 50,000, because our budget is 50, but there were, I think some, was it the one with the children on the bench? How much was that one? That was one, wasn't that really expensive?
Um, I don't, that was under 100. The secret bench, it's, I believe it was under 100, but I think it was more than...
It was like $100,000 when the budget was so, was a lot more, that's my, I wasn't here, but that's the history.
The budget was larger in the past. For example, they purchased three pieces from Jane De Decker, from Loveland, Colorado. One piece is at Riverside Park, one piece is at, right outside the recreation center, and then the other piece is at the Lyles Hotel, those three. They were bought between two fiscal years.
But in the future, if there was a significant area where the city decided they wanted to have some artwork, and we felt, the committee felt that there was some piece that we wanted to spend, we could save the $50,000 and do it over two years and buy the significant piece. So that's why it's important. But I think to develop the sculpture park, it's extremely important that we keep it in this area rather than an operating line budget. And I don't know if you want to say more about the sculpture park, but...
Sure. What was decided at the last Art and Public Places meeting is, they actually didn't spend all of their funding on art for this current fiscal year, so they have requested that their remaining funds be transferred to River Park to put in that infrastructure for, because currently, the park doesn't have electric and it doesn't have water. So those remaining funds, they've moved to a CIP in order for that to occur. So I will be getting with Ann, and we'll be coming before you for a budget transfer for those funds.
That's awesome.
I'm good.
Okay, moving right along, Ann.
The next strategic priority, number seven, we have is government transparency. And that is, that's, we do have accounting for, I don't know if John would like to give any updates on that, but we have the technology enhancements to community development for building permits, and we'll be utilizing, move forward towards online permitting.
Good afternoon. This is an item that's been in the budget for several years, we're ready to actually implement this. This has to do with the combination of both hardware and software upgrades, intention of which is to provide our services electronically, so that the public will be able to submit plans and receive comments back without ever coming into the office. We would also, are looking to go to an electronic payment system as well, so that way, you won't have to come into the office to pay for your permits either. Theoretically, you could do everything from your home.
Cool. Well...
Sounds good. Streamlining it, I like it.
Wow. Is that all right with you, Fred? Okay. Thanks, John.
The last item is other capital expenditures, they are not necessarily within the strategic priorities, but they are a function of government, so city facilities, security camera upgrades, as well as new cameras at city council chambers, technology equipment, and as you recall, under former Councilman Greg DeWitt, he had asked us to start planning out the vehicle replacement, similar to how the fire department does. We've done the same thing with the technology equipment as well. Additionally, there's funds in the technology equipment to make our meetings to be broadcast live, completely mobile at any location that we wish to be at in the future.
Great. Council?
Going to department, but?
Oh, yeah. So I imagine where we're going to meet.
Are we going to departmental expenditures?
Yeah, Chris, go ahead. Let's add, we have a departmental expenditures, we have some questions, I think.
Sure, sure.
I think Amy was...
Amy, you want to start with some departmentals?
What did I say before? I forgot.
Thanks, Chris. As you're on deck.
I do, I don't know which department you're in, but I concur with the idea.
Cap, under cap, under cap.
We're going to do department expenditures now, is that what we're doing? I'm sorry?
Yes.
Okay. I do concur with the points that were made by some of our other, my other council people, was that I think that we should consider adjusting Arlene's salary. I don't know, I don't have anything in mind, but, you know, I think we have to recognize the fine work that she's done over two years. And I did give her a performance review a year ago, and nobody else did, I think one other person did, I think Laura did.
Laura did.
So I don't think anybody else did, but that, I have encouraged her to encourage the council to do that on the annual basis when we're supposed to. And mine was very positive, so it's public information, and it was so long ago, I don't remember what it was specifically, but I wrote, I wrote things out, I didn't just put numbers on it. But I felt at that time that she should have had an increase, and no one, none of the other, well, besides Laura and I, did not do the review, and she felt because of the circumstances, she didn't want to ask for anything, but I think we should bring it forward at this time. So that's one point.
If that needs a second, yeah.
I'll make that a second. For discussion, or?
I'm in favor of that.
Do you have to decide right now, Arlene, what your raise is?
Not at this meeting rate.
Ash on the barrelhead, negotiation time? How do you want to do this?
We could assign somebody to negotiate with her or talk, isn't that what we do in the past?
Rooney, Feeny, and Ann be the moderators? How do you want to do this?
I don't think that's how it works.
In the past, you could have one member of council work with me, and we can bring something back.
That'd be okay?
Yeah, that would be good.
Great, thank you. And just for the public record, when we had this discussion a few years back, what Arlene asked for, which was very fair, beyond fair, the answer was yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Amy.
And, and I don't know, I know I had brought up the Goodbred Dixie Moon Building, so I'd like an update on that again, and how that's integrated with what, is it the Historic Preservation Board that would be involved with that? And what the, you know, sort of the strategic plans, are we just going to stabilize it, or, you know, I, you know, I don't think it would affect the budget, but I just want to know what's going on there, and encourage us to move along with that, that's the point of my bringing it up.
Okay.
Aren't we supposed to be discussing ongoing lobbying service contracts?
The lobbying service contract is within the general administration, and we have that coming up at your next city council meeting. They have not asked for an increase, they've asked for the 60,000.
Okay.
But that's for, we do have that as an agenda item for you to discuss at your next meeting, whether you'd like to move forward to begin negotiations. You've had a three-year contract with two renewals.
And how do you deal with the other staff and raises? Because everyone's doing it now.
In this fiscal year budget, we have a line item of 55,000 to be distributed among the merit upon their evaluation, the merit raises, it gets implemented in April, and then from there, it gets into their salary, and then the following salary counts for that, and then we have 55,000 planned.
Staff slush fund, line item?
It says, it says merit increases.
There'd be a better term for it, but just so...
Merit increases.
Merit increases, merit increases slush fund.
Pay for perform, it's called pay for performance line item.
55 grand enough?
And so are you looking at the funding, or?
Should we work through the slush fund, or does the staff work through the slush fund?
No, as far as the increases among staff, we've brought that as a proposal, but we can take a look at that for a higher amount, if that's...
Is 55,000 enough? That's the number that was brought forward, is that enough? Or we can get into that?
It has good extraordinary time, so let's talk about it.
Arlene, in that, in that budget line item, how did you come up with that number? Did you assume that you...
Better way to ask.
The percentage, or, you know, we have 70 people, or, I don't know.
63.
What's our number?
Meg's going to come, it's based on the full-time employments, number of full-time employment.
So how did you devise that number?
Meg Weiss, Director of Admin Services, we implemented a merit-based system about five years ago, and in the budget process, we take the average of the increases that were given the prior year with the new salaries, and we do a little bit of logical changing in where we think some of the evaluations may increase, decrease, we kind of look at the bell curve, and we come up with an estimation based on that information.
Is everybody in the room, let me ask it that way, happy with that number that was involved? Anybody that was involved in that process that's unhappy with that number? Can I ask it that?
I'm actually the one, I actually am the one who does it, based on the numbers, and then it is presented to Arlene with the justifications behind it, so I'm included in that, so I don't feel like I can give an answer.
Okay, but...
But you took into account the extraordinary extra time and effort that's been going on?
I'll actually turn that over to Arlene on that.
Okay.
So we looked at trying to keep in fair with understanding where our fiscal needs are in the economy now. We had hoped to at least stay at the 55. We know that this is a difficult time for our private economy as well, so we didn't want to overexceed the request, but I'm sure if there's an opportunity for us to look at that a little bit, 65,000 would probably be a little bit more of a morale boost for the staff.
55 grand's good, 65's better, is that what I'm hearing?
I think we would be willing to look at a morale boost, but we're comfortable with the 55, because that's, we want to be respectful of what's going on in the private sector and what's happening.
And you, could you ever have like a, like a bonus, instead of increasing?
No, we're not, we're not able to do that in government.
Okay, all right.
We, based on the performance evaluation, and there are, of course, folks who are going to score higher on their evaluation than others, and try to reward that based on the 4%, 3%, 2%.
So it's, it goes from 2% to 4% is what the range is? Okay.
That's what this, this year is calculated on. There have been in the past where it's been 0% to 3%, or it's been 0% to 5%, just based on the budget amount that we have.
And we count for the fact we have a triculation, and sometimes we have a triculation of vacancies in between, so it becomes when the employee is eligible for the, for the merit as well.
But do we need to make a motion to move it to 65?
Move it to 65? Sure.
I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, and I'll second that. There's been a motion to the 55,000...
Do we vote on Arlene?
...number to move that to 65, per Arlene's suggestion for discussion and work through? Okay? Is that all right with everybody?
That's good, yeah.
All right, do we need to vote, or just?
I think we have the direction, we have the direction.
You have the direction, okay, great. Chris, did you have something? I'm sorry.
I had a, I remember my question, I forgot it, but it was, if Derek will tell us how his contract works, is basically, I don't have any objection.
Hey, you know me, I thought of that about a minute ago. How does this affect Rooney, who's, you know, next to her?
No, I'm fine. So as you recall, in 2018, the contract that we executed with the city called for a $300,000 retainer. And if we came in, we billed against that retainer every month, and if we came in below that, we would split those revenues with the city, 70% going back to the city, 30% to my firm, so that both... When we looked at our numbers, last couple months of, of 2019 substantially increased as a result of the WCI litigation. However, we did ultimately save $81,000 off that 300,000, so it was just over $212,000 that the city was billed. With the split, the total came to, I believe, $240,000 at the city's retainer cost, which was compared to prior in-house services, was a substantial savings. Based on the litigation we expected in 2020, we expected those numbers to go up and we kept the contract at the same amount. I would say that the, the amount of hours that we have worked has increased almost directly in proportion to the litigation. Nearly, we're doing the final accounting now, but nearly $100,000 has gone strictly just to the litigation and the working out of the various cases we've had. Going forward next year, without those cases, fingers crossed, I think that we would return back to the pre-litigation days where we were, we were charging the city approximately 11,000 to 14,000 dollars per month on a $25,000 retainer. So I believe there's substantial savings going forward. At this point, I think we're going to end somewhere around $250,000 for the year as, as the city's portion of that retainer. And we have no, we have almost, even though the budget shows $50,000 for additional outside litigation, I don't, the only case we have pending right now is the CDD case on the Stormwater Utility, which is not really being pushed forward by the CDD. So I don't anticipate any real expenses in next year on that either.
Well, thank you, and it's nice to know that the arrangement that we made many, several years ago is working out favorably for the city and I, we appreciate all the work you've done. And not only because of the quantity of expense, but the fact that you've done it so well. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Very good.
Tapos and all, good job.
So if there isn't any more litigation, how does it work with Theriak? Do we have a retainer where we're still paying them or?
You pay the, you pay the retainer, it's $25,000 per month. And what I, what I have done is I bill against that retainer every month and then set whatever amount of money that does not get billed into a, an account on the city's behalf. Typical month, well, last year, I think we only ever exceeded the $25,000 retainer on one or two months. This year, we, I think we exceeded it three months with last year, last month being the worst because of all the land use items. But on, on the general statement, we're usually $5,000 to $6,000 per month under retainer. So at the end of that, that amount of money that's set aside, will get remitted back to the city. We are also changing our, so last year, we finalized in October, so we did not match the city's budget and it was the direction of the city council last year to line it up. So we're finalizing for the year this month in August, so that it'll line up with the city's budget going forward. So every year, we send the check back to the city, if there's savings, it'll go in to that fiscal year.
Well, I, I mean, like with Theriak, so if the CDD thing.
Well, Theriak, so if you look on your budget sheet, there's about a little over $300,000 for Theriak. That is for litigation directly, not for the land use work that he, that we do cost recovery for, for city staff. So going forward, that amount we kept in there because the cases aren't completely resolved, but there shouldn't be anything.
But when they are resolved, do we still have to pay him something for?
No.
No, it would be for the cost recovery for the zoning cases, is when he's review, additional review for the zoning cases.
But it doesn't cost us anything to keep him?
Correct.
It's cost recovery.
And, and how is that cost based on other cities or other attorneys? I, I mean, are, are people that are building in the city paying a lot more than they typically would elsewhere because of this or?
Uh, no, there are a number of cities that do cost recovery. It's becoming more common than not.
But do a lot of cities have somebody outside that charges that kind of rate versus in-house attorney?
That is also becoming more, more common.
Okay.
Because the, the role of the city attorney is to advise the city council, when the staff acts in a role as an advocate for a particular position, I cannot represent both staff and the city council. It looks like the prosecutor going up and representing the judge. So, so it is becoming more the norm that an outsider is being used for those kind of cases. I, I represent on occasion the city of Fort Myers in that role. Nancy Stroud represents the city council and Village of Astero in that, in that role, so it's.
I just wanted to make sure we didn't have an extra undue burden compared to other.
I did also want to comment that the, the amount for Theriak on the city's cost side might not go completely away because we do use David Theriak to assist when there are city-initiated comprehensive plan changes and city-initiated land use changes. So they would be providing some feedback on those as well, sometimes as well.
Yeah.
I had a couple of questions. The employee health insurance, one of the things I've been reading lately is the, because we're in the middle of the budget process at Benita Bay, is the impact of COVID-19 on expected health insurance costs. And so the general rule of thumb right now is you can expect probably the same percentage increase in costs for the non, if you exclude COVID. But then you're going to have the COVID cost on top. So right now, we're looking, we're being told something in excess of 10% is most likely. Now, I, how do we buy our health insurance? Is that through the state pool or is that?
No, we, we do a request for proposals and I'll have Meg come forward. And I do believe we budget a higher percentage and then we try to negotiate down.
We do, we have a request for proposal through a broker firm that we use. We're in a contract with them, they do the bids for the insurance. With us being a small group, which is under, under 100 lives on our insurance policy, so not just employees, the full lives, we have very limited plans that we can pick from. We get the box plans. The past few years, we have been turned down by several of the big, we are on United Healthcare right now, we were on Cigna previously, we've been on Aetna, Blue Cross Blue Shield has turned us down. We did negotiate down to a 9% this past year. We have budgeted a 15% to take that information into consideration as not only the normal increases, but some of the COVID-related, any other related that are out of our control. We do not renew until March, so unfortunately, we don't get a lot of information until after the January 1 renewal to go on. But we will take all that into consideration when we go through it. But we did increase it a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Fred? Thanks, Chris.
Yeah, on the subject of health insurance, I want to see us get pricing from Florida League of Cities and I want this broker out of it because it, it doesn't work out, but compare what their coverage is to what we're getting now. And if their coverage that they give you is better for the same money, that's what we should go with. Now, if it's not, then going through a broker is fine, but if it is and we can get for the same money, better covers, that's a big benefit to the employee.
And I would, I've heard enough about that, Fred, being up in Tallahassee and at the conferences, and we probably all kind of have a little bit. I think that's the bottom line, Meg. If we, if it's apples to apples for the same amount, the cost is apples to apples, let's start there. And we can get better coverage, let's please explore that to the fullest.
Just so you guys are aware, we have.
And I've heard in the past that it's more expensive, Fred, with the Florida League of Cities, but I don't know 100%.
Right.
We have, so when we opened the bids for the brokerage, Florida League of Cities chose not to participate in that process. Over the past year, year and a half, Arlene and I have been having conversations not only with Florida League of Cities, but other risk pools, not just Florida League of Cities, the similar plans that they have. We have not gotten any numbers, we are continuing to have those conversations with them. So we will, through this year, explore again those routes and try to get some solid numbers from them.
No, I appreciate that. And for example, Fred, Astero uses, I'm sorry to point, but Astero uses them, right? And we always are looking for opportunity, not, you know, this is probably an odd example to say work together. However, strength in numbers, we know when we buy our insurance and look at it, so, you know, what, what strength, what numbers is the system? What did Astero see as the advantages that they chose to use it? I don't know. I'm just saying, I'd like to fully flush that out, not a quarter flush, not a half flush, a 100% flush.
And I, I think this needs to happen well before this March. And what I'm saying is you take what we're getting now, get what Florida League of Cities would be charging, what would they give us for what we're paying now, compare that coverage and if the coverage is less than what we get, then it's simple, we want to continue. But if not, we want to do something where they bid and they will not bid through a broker. They've said that, they've made it clear.
So Meg, if you can check with your contemporary, and I would just ask Arlene, if you can check with your contemporary in Astero, because we don't need to bog it down or make it complicated, although it's an important question, let's see if we can just find out why Astero chose to go with Florida League of Cities, advantages, disadvantages, et cetera, et cetera. Kind of sum it up, Fred?
Could you, could you get a staff count size to comparable to us?
Pardon me?
Staff size comparable to us? So Astero, if we, we have 63 employees.
We're 70 employees about, right now, I think we're at about 85 lives on our insurance, which, like I said, includes dependents. We have very few dependents. Last I had spoken with, actually Lisa Pace, their finance director, they were at about 10.
So we're 85 dependents.
And that is a very big, in an insurance world, that is a very big difference because insurance under 50 is kind of one category, 50 to 100 is another category, and then moving into the 100 plus is a different category. So, but I will be glad to contact Astero and get some further information on them. And Arlene and I will continue working with the, it was actually some of the executives at, it's Florida Municipal Insurance Trust, so FMIT, which is through League of Cities. We will reach out to them again and continue our meetings to get more information.
And I would just be curious and maybe the same, I'd like to know what Steve Sarkozy has to say.
But just for clarification, under Florida League of Cities, would our lives be pooled with all the, everybody else that has Florida League of City insurance? Is that how that works? Or is it individually underwritten in both cases?
It is, it is, but it's not. It's a little bit more complicated, it's just putting everybody in one group. There is also, so they put everybody in one pool and then there's a percentage that it gets affected on your rates based on the utilization of your portion of group. And that is kind of the history of the city. I know the mayor said, talking about more in numbers, we have approached Lee County, we've approached Lee County sheriffs in the past, we've approached Lee, the fire district. We were an extremely high-risk group, small numbers, very large utilization. Some of that has evolved and changed with the change in our staffing, whether people have retired, not working anymore. So we are getting better, closer to a point where that may not affect us as much and we may have some better options at that point.
Great, that's all we can ask for. Like with anything, right? This is one example, but with anything we're talking about in this big budget of ours where we can do it better, possibly cheaper or get better service for the same amount of money, that should be involved with everything we're doing here. Yes, Fred?
Well, I, I would make one suggestion, besides talking to Astero, let's find out from Florida League of Cities, another city that has comparable staff size, Astero is small, and see how their coverage compares to ours and what they pay. Then you got apple, more of an apple to an apple.
Yep, absolutely.
I like talking to Astero.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Meg's all over it, Fred.
Thank you, Meg.
On it.
Thank you, thank you. Somebody has to leave it too.
Does somebody have a 2 o'clock meeting we're bumping up against?
I had a four.
Four?
I had to be out by 3:30, so.
Okay. Everybody else good on time?
Yeah, we're good.
All right. Is it time for the halftime show, Chris?
Start eating though.
Is it time for halftime? Do we need a little break? Go ahead, Chris.
Okay, I had one other question, and that gets to public safety. And I'm certainly happy with the support that we get from the Lee County Sheriff's Office. They do a great job. But one of the things that I'm concerned about is reading some public safety statistics. It seems like nonviolent crime is down, but since the start of the COVID pandemic, gun sales and gun, especially at gun shows and so forth, there's just simply more guns. And given a 14% unemployment rate, people's level of frustration, I guess, with what's going on, the impact of the economy on their personal lives, have we, I would just ask that when we get around to the next meeting, that, that we get some report from Blinkley, what Lee County sheriffs are, are looking at, you know, our contract with the Lee County sheriffs, you know, given the environment we're in, is it right-sized? Do we, you know, are, are we, do we have enough coverage? I don't know what the situation was like when we had the financial downturn 10, 11 years ago. We're a much bigger city now than we were then. But I'm just concerned, it always has seemed to me that, you know, if you have high unemployment rates, you tend to have an increase in the level of criminal activity. I'd just like to have some assurance that, that from Colonel Lee, that, you know, what we've got in terms of our contract makes sense.
And, Arlene, can I, can I be included in that as the sheriff liaison to the council, please? Thanks.
And Chris, in my last conversation with Captain Lee, there was little violence in terms of guns and robberies and thefts, but family violence is definitely.
Yeah, that, and that's where they're seeing a lot. What I was reading is that was what they were seeing, a lot of gun crimes being, you know, family, families get under a lot of stress, things happen, sooner or later, a gun gets pulled.
Domestics are way up. It, I, I don't, he, when I talk to the sheriff, they, you know, domestics are way up because everybody's in a heated state right now. He didn't reference guns as being related to the issue, but he did say that the domestics, suicides, and other related issues are significantly on the rise.
Substance abuse.
Right, right, up and down the line. Yes, good, very good point, Chris.
And I, I would like to piggyback on that and say two things. Number one, the level of service was established way more than a decade ago. The city is a whole lot bigger, like Chris has pointed out, but one other thing, the headquarters for the district, if you want to call it, used to be down more here and now it's more up north. So all of that affects when things happen and how quick they can get here. And you can bet that the crime rate is not just going up here, but it's across Lee County. So I think we really need to look, is the amount of deputies that we're buying extra, is it sufficient for the bigger city, the crime situation and the tension that's going on and the, because the economy's down and the virus and everything else.
The geographic location of the substation didn't affect the amount of folks that we have on patrol.
That's, that's what they say, but if they're, if they were here and now they're up there, it is going to have some effect, will it?
No, it doesn't. We, we get a certain amount of police officers from Lee County that are in Benita, whether the substation is on Coconut or whether it's on Old 41, the number of police doesn't change.
I hear you, but the, but this level of the extras was set so long ago and the city's bigger, the crime rate's different. We need to look at this.
Right. Well, I mean, they're, they're, first of all, they're giving us student, all right, they're giving us student resource officers right now on, on pretty much what's the equivalent of a handshake, and they've done that for years. Our crime rates in Lee County are not going up and the amount of officers that we have right now in Benita Springs has not gone down. So I'm, I'm pleased to go over all of that contractually with Lee County, but I don't think the assertions that have been made are accurate, but I'd love to flush it out for y'all.
I just, again, I'd just like to get some input from Colonel Lee, that's all I'm asking for. That's all I have. That's all I had.
Next. Do you see any hands on the podium? Okay. Anne, you're up. What's next? Millage rate?
Uh, yes.
Water tax? Hold on the rollbacks?
If, um.
No motions, just throwing them out there. I don't know, what else we need to talk about?
Items. We do need.
I moved, I, I make a motion to maintain the current rate on our millage rate.
I'll second that.
Whatever it is. 81 something, 73.
Point eight three.
Point eight one seven three, correct?
Eight one seven three.
Not to exceed. Comments, Chris?
I think that's appropriate.
Mike?
I'm good.
Fred?
Yeah, I'm good, and I, I think we can really wait to get into any rollback right up to almost the end, because we're gonna be a lot smarter about what's, how the budget, how the revenue as projection is continuing to drop, what the economy's doing, all that'll be different. You know, it's, it's changed in a month, worser, so we'll see what we're at.
We have to set the rate now, don't we?
No, I said I support that. I don't want to get into a rollback discussion.
Maximum, not to exceed.
Oh, I, I can't, he's not talking.
Yeah, no, it's hard to hear, Fred. That's, she's having trouble hearing you, that's all.
Talking to the mic.
Yeah, the not to exceed rate of point eight one seven three, and then we're going around the horn here for comments. Amy, sorry to poll.
No, I made the motion, I think we should.
Yeah, okay, Jesse?
I'm good with it.
I am, I'm pleased with that.
Laura?
Approve.
All right, roll call, please. Been a motion in a second to the not to exceed a point eight one seven three, roll, as a ceiling not to exceed rate. There's been a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Karumba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Okay, um, maybe, can we talk about now, Fred, you were talking about zeroing out for this year, maybe as a way to look at the water tax, we maybe look at zeroing it out for this year and reexamine it next year?
Yeah, that, you zero, you could, you could zero it out, there's another thing you could do, which is, I think there's a, the bucket of money we get out of that has got a $24.
Please talk into the microphone.
Yeah, I forget I got an earpiece. That's whatever, everybody ought to have an earpiece.
But if you talk into the microphone, there's no problem. You're not talking into the microphone.
So, we, we got really a number of options. One option is you could do that. The other option is you, I believe it's like $24 goes into real programs, and the other goes into other things. You could reduce it from the 50 bucks to 24, that's an option. Another option, I suppose, would be you could go to zero, but don't destroy the stormwater district, because if you do that by repealing the ordinance, then the ability of communities that are in various districts across the city that want to assess themselves to do improvements can't get that 30-year low-interest financing. They're looking at five, seven-year bank loans.
Well, can we, let's take it in two bites, if you can. If it's a zero balance, we just zero out the fee for this year, but roll it over to next year, Anne, what does that look like? As opposed to, I guess, you know, in theory, I understand, we can reduce it a little bit, but if we zeroed it out this year, how much have we raised in the past year, and if we just zero it out this year, what does that look like on, on our books?
Million and a half.
I was just gonna, right, but before I complicate it with, do we reduce it in half, why don't we just, in, in my mind, zero it out for this year and see what the economic conditions bring next year in Benita Springs?
And it's two pools, also, that the, what he's talking about reducing it would be maintenance stuff, where that $24 is going towards water projects, building things. So, you know, do you want to, because that would affect our CIP if we get rid of the $24, right?
No.
We're also adding a $100,000 position for water, remember that.
Any, any and all the above, Anne, in, in whatever order you want to address them.
We're showing the expected, uh, right now at 1.5 million, so we've collected, uh, 1.6 million, we've spent, the only thing that's been spent out of that fund has been 83,000.
Anne, a little bit in the microphone, I'm sorry. Thank you.
The only thing that's been spent out of that fund this fiscal year has been related to the, the billing, the assessment, the, it going on the tax bill and then the collectors, uh, tax collector collecting it, so that, those total costs were 83,000, so does leave us with a little over 1.5 million dollars. So if nothing is spent out of it for this year, then that will still be in that fund for, to be budgeted for something next year.
Why wasn't it spent? Part of that was for maintenance, didn't we do any maintenance? I don't understand how that could still be the same.
The maintenance was accounted for in the fiscal operating budget, so it was, uh, the operating budget was in the assessment, so the assessment was reserved for, and it can be possibly used for, as an example, the BG mine, purchase of land. We have to, we have to provide a resolution to say, would you want to take the expenses out of maintenance to, to capital? I'll let Derek.
I guess the way to think about this for your future budgeting process is, we currently budget maintenance in the general fund, and since the future of the stormwater assessments was up in the air, I don't think there had been any plans to change that. Going forward, the assessment has two components, a capital component, which is for acquiring land or other assets, and then has a maintenance component. If you're currently paying for your maintenance obligations out of your general fund, and you have not acquired any major projects that are gonna increase those maintenance costs, then there may not be a need to utilize that now. But the capital component of it, if you reduce that, you, and you have commitments to, whether it's the grant funding and other initiatives, to acquire property and, and take other steps to acquire capital, well, then you'll need to find additional funds to, to maintain those commitments. So, I think the, the part of the issue that was discussed last year is that although you were making an assessment for the first year, the assessment totals, the million-dollar plus, wasn't enough to get the major projects that the, the city envisioned started. So it was sort of envisioned that at some point you would borrow against those revenues in order to get those major projects started, which would be in the tens of millions of dollars.
Okay, thank you.
I hope that clarifies it a little bit.
Also, Jesse? Yeah, can I ask a question also on that? Um, you know, we just spent a significant amount of time talking about, you know, the 12.1 in lawsuits that we're already behind. Um, we also have this situation where potentially, uh, there are gonna be communities, if they were to win, that are suing us over the maintenance side of this. If we get, if we flatten it out to zero, does that potentially get rid of the potential for the lawsuit also? You're done.
I don't think it would change anything with respect to the lawsuit, uh, because they're challenging the, the authority of us to make the assessments.
Right, and if we're not making the assessment, why would this?
It's not, it's not, they're not assessing any damages, they're not claiming it's based on the damages, so the actual amount of payments, the ordinance itself that's under challenge.
So, okay, and to play this out again, so if they're successful and we don't have the right to do it, we would then be creating a tax that would exclude them, but not the people who are not in those communities.
No. I'm sorry, could you ask me that one more time?
So, if they were, if they were correct and we don't have the authority to, to hit them with that, then we would be essentially creating a tax that would exclude them in totality from it, thereby making it a tax for the folks who are not within the HOAs only to be paying it. Meaning District 2 and 5.
I don't believe that's correct.
Up to, up to the.
They can be excluded is if they maintain the water up to the level that we demand.
They are, they are, they are just attempting to get credit for stormwater management and quality, both of a quality and quantity that they spend, you know, hundreds of thousands of, that's what the point, that was in the facility anyway.
So their, their challenge is based on the premise.
That the city normally does, that they felt they should get credit for, that's where it comes. But it's not for the totality, it's only for a part of it.
For what, it's for what? It's for more than half of it, though, is what I'm saying. So I'm saying, people who live in any of these larger communities, and I won't even pick one, would not, would be paying half what they would, so you in the quarry would be paying $50, and I over on Imperial Pines Way would be paying $25.
What stormwater management expense are you bearing there?
Right, okay.
That's the point.
Okay, well, I could make the argument, I've seen some videos on some very large communities, right in this area, and I won't even name any names, that have blue-green algae that are going directly into the Imperial River, that directly, uh, relate to my water quality issues. So, are, are they doing such a great job that they should be getting a tax cut, and the people who can't afford it the most should be getting a tax hike? I don't think so.
You're talking about two different things.
Let me see if I can clarify the issue a little bit on the, on the lawsuit, at least, so that.
Derek has the floor, Derek, I think.
Yeah, just the, on the lawsuit.
Walk us through it, please.
Yeah, they're, they're not challenging the ability of, of a municipality, not really, challenging the ability of municipality to, to have a stormwater assessment. What they're challenging is that as a special assessment, they have to benefit from the assessment. What they're arguing is that they are not benefiting from a maintenance perspective, because they maintain their own stormwater, and that they're not benefiting from the capital component, which is because they, they charge themselves for capital improvements. Now, what they're failing to do in that analysis is to address the entire system outside of themselves. You know, they drive on roads, they, they access the rest of the city, the city, um, and so that capital component, we believe, will be sustained against them. Um, the maintenance process, where they maintain their own stormwater, we've already provided a process to the council this summer, where they could get up to 100% of that back, should they not actually be benefiting from it. Now, with respect to the properties, if they're successful, the other, outside of, outside of, of the CDD, those properties would still be reaping a benefit from the improvements, therefore it would not affect them.
I'm not talking about the benefit, I'm talking about the tax.
Yes. I'm, I'm sorry, what was that?
I'm talking, I'm not talking about the benefit, yes, they get the benefit, I'm saying, I was talking about the tax component.
Yeah, but the idea is they're, they're, they're challenging the benefit, not the tax.
Okay, so, they're hitting, they're hit with the full 50 in middle Benita, and the rest of Benita that, that is within those HOAs potentially may not be paying that same amount. I, that's what I want to clarify.
So you object to the credit system?
Well, I'm, that's a part of what I, uh, object to.
I think, if we're gonna discuss it, we, I think there's two different things that you're talking about, okay?
Right.
You object to the credit system.
Yes.
All right, but you don't object to the ta, to the.
No, I agree, I, I object to the tax, but I agree, I object even more vehemently to the credit system.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Derek, do you have clarification on that, or Matt?
Well, I would just add that, um, if I could summarize what Derek was saying, you know, the, the argument sounds like that they don't see that any improvement that would be constructed with the tax dollars would benefit their community. And I think there's probably strong projects that, that maybe are counter to that. Uh, Spring Creek Improvement is in the headwaters, or the golf course project is in the headwaters of Spring Creek, and that is the body of water that the community that's challenging us discharges into. So, you know, as far as the lawsuit goes, that's a Derek question, but I, I think the city has projects already in its CIP that show there would be a benefit to the overall system, so that, that may make that lawsuit a little harder to win, I don't know, that will be up to Derek.
The, the $24 portion, we do have that allocated in part of the CIP then? Or is that just still sitting in a fund that we haven't touched any of it, we haven't allocated anything?
It's all sitting in the fund, which it could be, it could be transferred for a number of these projects within the CIP. It also could be utilized, if you would like it to, in the future for the BG mine, because that's for land acquisition for stormwater purposes.
Perfect.
But no, it's not currently in the, in the CIP as proposed.
And then the, the maintenance portion, we didn't do any extra maintenance to use up that money, it's just sitting, sitting there from last year.
We used with what was in the budget, there is, there is need that it could be brought forward, and we could absolutely find, we could be using it right now, but we wanted to understand where the direction of council was with the fee as well.
You could apply it at this point, and then you would have a benefit in your fund balance to the general fund, is that not correct?
Yes.
Well, I'm, in, in, not just to apply it, but we could be doing extra maintenance, so we could still be spending the maintenance.
Absolutely, you could be doing maintenance beyond which we, we absolutely have a need for, yes.
Number one.
There you, Fred.
I was gonna say, I know you're trying to talk into the microphone, Fred, but we gotta get it.
Down lower.
There you go. Nope, nope. There it is, okay. If you go down to the $24, I believe that that gets rid of the credit to communities, HOAs for their, their work, but the $24 is not only for maintenance, but you can do a new project or you can acquire land. So you, you actually get three possibilities to do with that.
Correct. The $24 was explained to us by StanTech when they were providing their presentation, is that, um, everyone has private roads and internal roadways, if you, if you've got it as transportation-wise, but everyone has to get out of, uh, their private road, onto a 41, onto a Benita Beach Road, or onto a public facility, so there is.
There's a better example that, that Stan, that was StanTech's logic, but the, really the better example is water quality issues.
Right.
Because it's, they're, they're one and the same. You have flooding issues, which is really what StanTech was talking about, but the, the other issue that is, you know, right there is water quality, and obviously, we, we have a water quality regulation in the freshwater portion of the Imperial, and we're teed up through the regulation process in the future to have some additional water quality regulations in Spring Creek, as well as in the estuary part of the Imperial River, that will require improvements to be constructed through capital improvement funds.
Yeah, it was understood that the benefit of the capital did not trigger the need for the, uh, credit, because the capital increases the capacity and qua, water quality citywide.
So I see value to keeping the infra, keeping the apparatus of what you were talking about protecting Fred for later, but I would go, I would be, I would like to make a motion to go along the lines of what Fred said with zeroing out, uh, zeroing this year out totally, and then reevaluating it next year, instead of voting to get rid of it in its totality.
You know me.
You want to zero, but, I'm sorry, what did you?
Zero out the water tax.
Both of them?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and the only thing I would say, and you know me, everything comes through the New England Patriots somehow, being a season ticket holder, we were given the option because, and I don't know the NFL policy, but I think they're gonna allow something like 25% of the fans to show up. Well, they gave fans the option that have season tickets to either take a year off and get refunded and not lose your tickets, take a year off, not get refunded, which kind of seemed, I don't know, but anyway, take the year off, not get refunded, let the Patriots hang on to your money, or you could give up your tickets. So this is kind of like the option in the middle, where unprecedented times, getting creative, not being in complete agreement on the board, but saying, let's look at it next year when the economy is back on its feet, while not hurting ourselves on potential water projects. And I go back to my premise on this, and why I voted against it initially, when we look at what Ellie's doing, uh, when we look at what we could do in terms of more state grants and more federal grants, our taxpayers have already paid that money. So, I, with that thought in mind, and with so much economic uncertainty, I would also support Fred motion, Fred's idea, his motion, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but to zero it out for this year.
I motion his idea.
Jesse's motion, Fred's idea. Fred, are you seconding Jesse's motion?
I thought he had a different motion, I thought Fred.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry, Amy. Fred?
What is Fred's?
Well, no, I, I, I said we had two choices, this, and also the other one is to just cut it down to the $24 for this year, and everybody gets a big reduction, and that does get you out of, at least this year, people getting into this big argument about the, whether or not to qualify for the discount, so to speak.
Well, Jesse made a motion.
My motion, my motion is to zero it out for the.
I'm gonna second that.
Yeah.
And then, okay, so there's been a motion to zero it out by Councilman Purdon, I've seconded that, is there further discussion on that?
Yes.
Okay, Laura?
I'm worried about revenue, and I just feel that maybe we should just hold off to see how the season goes, and leave it as is, for this particular year, because it's see how the season goes, and leave it as it for this particular year, because it's been unprecedented, and if we have an Irma, we screwed ourselves. And even if we have, you know, like a Charlie, we just dropped a lot of water, it's a hassle and it's caused issues. So while I voted against it, right now I am so afraid of the minimal amount of revenue or the drastic shift in our revenue that I would leave alone.
At the same time, we're raising taxes on people when they're in a worse situation than we are as a city.
No, we're leaving it as it.
No, that is, no, we are, no, we're not leaving it as is, we have to set it right now, which is creating the tax on the people right now, that's what you're doing.
That's already, I mean, they already...
Right, but we have to set it each year, just like we did with the millage, it has to be set every single year.
We didn't change the millage.
We changed the amount that...
No, we didn't change the millage.
Property values are going up, so it's...
Right, so we've made out on that for the last four years.
Fair enough, fair enough, no, fair enough Laura, fair enough, positive, the power of positive thinking. Property rates are still, or values going up. No, you're right, they may not, you're correct about that.
But they have for the last four years.
Yes, they have.
Okay, I definitely do not want to zero it because of similar reasons that Laura brought up, because I think that this facility is the proper one to use to provide a reliable revenue stream for the projects that we just looked at, whatever it was, $17 million for this year, and God knows how many millions as we go forward. It could be used a facility to, if we earmark them, to pay off borrowings, which we might need to acquire lands. I definitely do not want to get rid of the facility, I want to keep it going for the reasons that Fred said, because individual neighborhoods who need to do, you know, when we do all this testing here, there, and everywhere, and we find a community is violating the environmental and resource laws, then it's likely that we're going to suggest strongly or go after the communities that are causing problems within the city, and they will not have a facility to improve their infrastructure because they don't, you know, they just can't borrow the way the city does. So I think for that reason, which is what Fred said, we should definitely maintain the thing. If we have concerns about, and I have a question for Derek this, because I'm not in favor of the lawsuit, it's from my community, I never have been in favor, and that's what I've been saying, but I don't have control over that, that's the CDD that's doing it. If by any chance they go to court and challenge the credit system that is in existence in the current year, and they get a, they get agreement that we should give them a credit, it was designed so that they get a credit against the following year's fee, so what happens then?
Derek? Thank you, Amy.
Well, we never adopted the actual fee reduction.
Could you speak into your microphone, please?
We never actually adopted the pro...
We never adopted the credit system?
Okay.
Yes, we did.
Well, if I recall, we also had this discussion whether we would do remittances or pay it in the future, and that hasn't been decided yet. So we have the money sitting there, so you could remittances if you decide to do so.
I can't hear what he said. Repeat that. When we originally discussed the remittance back, we had said that if the collection of this fiscal year and the future fiscal year, we would credit that second year, they would receive twice the credit. If we don't collect this, if you charge a zero amount and they become entitled to the credit, we would have to remit it from the fund that we currently have to them. So you remit it back from the fund, so there wouldn't be a mechanism? Okay. That was my question, I thought we were creating another problem.
Nobody has received a credit, however, oh.
Imagine that.
In order to get the credit, just for information, they have to prove that they are creating a benefit to the city by doing their own stormwater management and quality. So for example, if we're on a restriction for nitrogen, and we have to have so many millions of, thousands of pounds of nitrogen, that community has to show that they have reduced so many pounds of nitrogen so that it will reduce the obligation that the city has. This is just saying who is doing the work, it's like if somebody else does the work for you, and then you give them credit for doing it, that's sort of how it works, that's my understanding, but...
That is correct. Their basic argument is that this is a double tax, they're already doing the work that we're assessing them for, they would have to prove, they would have to prove that.
And what's that process, thank you Laura, what's that process Derek, to prove it either way? Us to prove it, or them to prove it?
No, they would submit, based on the credit methodologies that StanTech provided, evidence, and then the council would rule on whether they met those standards. After that meeting, I did follow up with them twice, and I haven't heard one response, whether they're planning to move forward the credit application, nor whether they are going to take up further discussions about a modified program with us.
So silence?
Correct.
You've heard crickets, okay.
But I think we need, when we're discussing the revenue that's raised here, I think we need some guidance from the staff about the importance of that revenue for the projects that we have planned, that's where I'm really most concerned.
What if...
Matt?
Well, okay. Well, it's simple, I told you, you could drive out the revenue right now to your existing expenses and have a fund balance benefit for your general fund, or, as Councilman Gibson suggested, we could, I mean, we're late in the year, but we could take on additional projects. If you look at the budget submitted before you, there were large increases in the public works budget, a lot of them were relational to stormwater maintenance, so, you know, those dollars could go to cover those additional expenses in the future. It's really a policy decision for the board. Currently, everything was funded through the general fund.
Well, I think there was a lot of good reasons to pass that fee, I won't use the word tax, but I think water quality has been a number one, or number two, one or the other, most important thing that we are trying to do as a council, and I agree with Laura, I mean, times are uncertain, we don't, we're not sure exactly how things are going to work out with respect to tax collections, fee collections. So I think we need to be cautious and keep it in place. I think we do need to add to the funds that are going to be used ultimately to buy the land that's necessary, to enhance our stormwater system, and in that process, we'll also be able to clean water with rudders, whales, and so forth. So I'm gonna, I don't want to change it.
I think if we zero anything out, it should just be the maintenance portion, since we still have that in our regular general fund budget. The other $24, we do have a lot of projects, and that money can be used to borrow, do a lot of other things that we want to do, so.
What if I amended, what if I amended to making it the 24 even, everybody, everywhere in Benita pays the 24? And that way, okay, we sit here and we say we're worried about money, and we're worried about 34135.
So if we want to do that?
34135 is more worried about the money than anyone else, we're at 14% unemployment, comparable to the 12% in 34134, where you guys will pay half the rate that the people in middle Benita will pay. So if you think that that's a fair, or if you think that's a fair or equitable way, then I don't think you understand fair and equitable. So again, if we're worried about money, and our budget is fine, we should be worried about the people who don't have any money and trying to hit them with a larger tax.
And I guess to split the difference on this...
But what about the incentive for the communities to maintain their water? So they do get the $25 back, you take away the incentive, you might get the people being lazy again and not dealing with the water.
That wasn't why we did the tax, it wasn't because the communities weren't paying their fair, weren't doing the job, they have to do the job if they want people to live in there. That's why you pay the HOA fees.
Let me just jump in for a quick second.
They were not doing the job, Jesse, Jesse, that's not correct, we have, we have neighborhoods all over the city that were not doing their jobs.
Right, but the ones that are suing us are paying water mitigation, hold on, they're paying water mitigation in their HOA, which is what I'm saying.
Yes, so, so what point are you making?
You just missed it, go ahead.
That's a positive, isn't it?
Right, but she just said that we had to create this tax because the communities were not paying their fair share, yet there's a lawsuit based on the fact that they're already paying for it.
She was speaking to the credit, I believe.
So let me jump in here for a second, if we were to zero out both fees, we would still have the mechanism in place, and that would kind of be like one of my options with the Patriots. One of my other options with the Patriots, which would be kind of split the difference here, which also keeps the mechanism in place, but scales it back to what Fred had mentioned on 24 cents, also not only keeps the mechanism open moving forward, but keeps the mechanism open and kind of funds it at about half of what it was this past year. Would you agree with that Fred?
It only funds one bucket.
Understood, even flushing it out further, it's like generally half the money, but funds the maintenance bucket, correct?
No, it funds the capital improvement.
Capital improvement, not maintenance.
Not maintenance.
I would amend, I would amend my motion to do exactly that.
There you go. And I'll second that for further discussion.
For clarifications, that's just capital, just maintain the capital and zero out the maintenance.
That's what I was saying.
So I said it incorrectly, I apologize, I was trying to walk through the steps, made it to the last step, darn it, I almost got it right. But we heard, we heard the discussion. Okay, so Councilman Purdon has amended his motion, and I've seconded that amended motion, is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
No.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
No.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
No.
Councilwoman Karamba?
No.
Motion fails, 4-3. I make a motion that we maintain the fee as we, as existed in this current budget and just carry it forward, same amount.
I'll second it.
Okay, there's been a motion to keep the current rate in place, and there's been a second, council, is there further discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
No.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Because I believe in fairness, no.
Councilwoman Carr?
No.
Mayor Simmons?
No.
No, no, wait, I mean, yes, I'm sorry, I got confused.
There's a shock.
I'm in favor of what Amy's motion is.
Yes, okay, hi.
Sorry.
I was saying, oh my God, we should have voted no the last time.
We will, we will bring a assessment resolution to you at the next meeting.
So, I'm sorry, what was the roll call? Based on that, we will have, Derek will have the assessment resolution at the next, will you have it at the second meeting in August?
Second meeting in August.
The second meeting in August. What was the vote, I'm sorry, but I can't...
In favor of your...
In favor, okay, and now, now what's happening? What did you just say? We need to bring forward to you the assessment resolution, which will be forward to the tax collector, so we will have that at the, we will have that at the second meeting in August, based on the direction... I do like to have, maybe at our next meeting, or our council meeting if there's time, I want a discussion about the fact that those resources are still, that's line item, you know, because I thought when we did do that, that they, that certainly the maintenance was earmarked, that's the whole point of having these, what they correctly should be called user fees, should be earmarked to be used for those particular expenditures. I understand that the capital expenditures, they definitely should be used, and I think we have capital expenditures that have to do with water, and the same thing with the maintenance, so I'd like to understand how, once that facility's in place, how do you utilize the fees, I don't quite get why they're still there. So Matt and I can discuss that, we can have some recommendations for where they can be taken for the maintenance out of the existing operating budget in the future, as well as projects that they can be allocated to within the CIP.
Can I ask a clarifying question, you said August 2nd, what happens on August 2nd with this?
Sorry, the second meeting in August.
Okay, second, okay, so what happens?
And you'll have a resolution?
That we will then have to vote on again?
Correct.
What is the date for that? I just want, I want to make sure that my constituents are aware when we're voting for this tax increase.
I think it's on the calendar.
19th of August.
It's the 19th.
August 19th, August 19th is the tax increase, okay, August 19th is the tax increase vote? Thank you, all right, appreciate it.
Are we done? What else are we supposed to do?
And that'll be at our, I mean, obviously, but that'll be at our nine o'clock meeting, in addition to our nine o'clock meeting.
Yes, well, also, as I said before, we're going to have a, we're going to have a dedicated agenda item for budget as well.
Yep, okay, thank you.
The other item that we needed to discuss with you is we do need to set for, in order to have it part of the trim notice, is the September budget meeting, September 9th at 5:05 PM, and we do need to indicate the location of that. I did have the opportunity to speak to most of you, as you are aware, we are ordering equipment that will allow us to be permanently mobile, but we do need to utilize a consultant for these facilities, so for the, right now, in order to broadcast live, and in the essence, we need, we've always broadcast our council meetings live, so we'd like to continue, but we do need to advertise the location of that meeting, and that's on here, Benita Springs Recreation Center.
On the trim notice.
And that will be on the trim notice, so we will not be able to adjust the location.
So we're staying here?
That's discussion, I'd like, on Wednesday, I was going to discuss with council how we do our future meetings, but in order to provide for the trim notice, we do need to advertise now the location, and that would be at the recreation center.
We can't do the fire station, we can't advertise, and we just move to the fire station?
We can do that, we just have to, we'd have to make that decision today, we'd have to make that decision today if you'd like to move to the fire station.
What are the costs different, just that we're talking about?
Between $31 to $3200 for the, per meeting, correct.
And at the fire station?
There is no, there is no additional cost, because it's already hardwired to broadcast live onto all our access channels.
So should we advertise that it'll be at the firehouse, or should we have a meeting here where nobody's here and we're paying $3100?
Or $3200.
$3200.
I think that we go to the fire station.
I'll second that. Is there further discussion, council, on the location? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Ian? Miscellaneous categories, housekeeping items, other?
Just, if I can just confirm that, so the Wednesday, September 9th, tentative budget hearing is what the name of the hearing is, at 5:05 PM at the fire station, okay, because I do need to submit this to the county today to be on the trim notice, okay.
And when will we officially move to the fire station?
We do have advertised meetings for this for Wednesday, and Derek, do you have any future advertised zoning for the second meeting in August? I mean, yes.
We do have meetings for the 19th as well.
Have you, and you've advertised those?
I don't know if they've been advertised.
So we'll need to check for zoning purposes if they have been advertised for August 19th, otherwise, we would look for direction from council whether you'd like to meet here on September 2nd, which is your evening meeting, or if you'd like to meet at the fire station.
Make a motion that we meet at the firehouse?
Second.
There's been a motion to meet at the firehouse in a second for the September 2nd meeting. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Do we need the same motion for the second meeting in September?
I think once you've made that decision, we'll go forward with, from there, but we will get back with you on August 19th to see what zoning cases have already been advertised for the 19th.
Can you let us know Wednesday meeting?
Hopefully, yes.
Miscellaneous, kitchen sink, Ian.
Nothing else? Nothing else, but we will be working on the items that, taking lots of notes, and to get more information back to council as requested, and thank you very much for all your input.
Great, thank you. Arlene, last call?
I just, I did want to take the opportunity to thank you all for your consideration of our staff, and that, that increase that will be a huge morale boost, and we really appreciate the support of council.
Rooney, last call?
Just that, the extra money to staff will probably come from the money I save you.
Typos and all.
Derek's family.
Typos and all.
Just maybe we could impose a typo penalty.
Anybody else? Team in the back, everybody good back there, any, anything to add? Dwight, any final thoughts?
I'm all good.
Okay, anything down here, Amy, Jesse?
I'm all good.
Laura, everybody good? Motion to adjourn?
Steph, and, and your team, phenomenal.
Motion to adjourn, team, we...
Second.[1795.83]